Good evening. Welcome to tonight's regular board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting into order. Please join us in the pledge and moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Board President and Trustees and members of the Yannis. No, sir, we have no changes. The agenda will be as noted.
The first item, Mr. President and Trustees, is board recognition. Item number one, recognition of campuses with student attendance rate of ninety-eight percent during the second six weeks period of the 2017-2018 school year. To make that presentation, we have our Director of Intake, and that's Mrs. Lili Gonzalez-Lugo. Ms. Lugo?
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Mr. Superintendent Fernando Castillo, Trustees and Community. This evening, we will be recognizing two campuses that met the district attendance goal of ninety-eight percent. These two campuses also met the -- can you all hear me? These two campuses also met the ninety-eight percent attendance district goal for first six weeks as well. First place with a ninety-eight point zero one attendance percentage for the second six weeks goes to Ms. Principal Rosalina Navarro, Orribas Elementary. Second place with a ninety-eight point zero percent attendance percentage goes to Griselda Álvarez, Principal at Stanky Elementary.
Keep it up.
Okay, open forum part of the meeting is provided by local board policy, BED Local. We have Minerva Reina, then we have Fred Álvarez, Linda Estrada, Pete Jaramillo, and Raquel Martínez. And I guess everybody's talking about different things, so you have about three minutes. Minerva Reina, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. As you said, my name is Minerva Reina. I am the AR for TSTA NEA from the P.S. Garza Elementary School here in Donna. And yes, I'm supposed to talk about DACA and the Dreamers, but first I'd like to know how many of you actually already know what it's about, so that I'm not losing any time explaining everything. So everybody knows what it's about. So then, the reason I am here is because we want for all of you to stand with TSTA NEA in support of the Dreamers, in support of justice for all, in support that all these people are allowed to stay here and continue with their education, to continue being part of the community, to continue being part of our nation. And so I know already that some of you, Mrs. Reina and Mr. Castillo, have already filled out a postcard, which is what we are requesting that you do, and we do thank you for that, but that is our purpose here tonight. But, so I hope that all of you can join us and support the DACA, the Dreamers, with all of us, with TSTA NEA. And that is the reason we are here tonight. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Fred Álvarez.
Hi, good evening. My name is Fred Álvarez. Thank you for allowing me this time. I just want to take a couple of minutes to thank the Superintendent, the Administration and the Board for, again, allowing us to continue to recognize our ESPs, our education support professionals. I know it's a big phrase. Sometimes we just like to call ourselves paras, or custodians, or cafeteria ladies, or whatever, what have you. We are education support professionals. We support our educators. Although we are not at the front of the classroom, we are behind the scenes and we are doing everything we can. Everybody from Transportation Services, Health and Student Services, Skilled Trades, Technical Services, Custodial and Maintenance, Para Educators, Security Services, we do everything that we can to continue the workflow. Tomorrow, November fifteenth, is a day recognized by the National Education Association as National ESP Day. And I know as a local chapter, Donna TSTA recognizes a local ESP of the year. I get the privilege to serve as the Region Six President for TSTA NEA, and as a region, we recognize each individual local chapter's ESP, and then we pick one for the year as well. And we just thank you guys for allowing us to recognize our ESPs last year. I know we picked an ESP of the year for the first time last year. I'm so excited that Donna is going to continue to do that this year. I know at my department, Food Services, each campus picks a worker for the month, and I hope that all the other departments are doing the same, and we're going to keep it going. Actually, we have these little pins that we have given, I think, everybody. Thank you. I hear they're crunchy, so it's all up there. It says "Respect," and you can't spell "respect" without ESP. There's a lot of other words you can spell with "respect," but anyway, you can't spell "respect" without ESP, so I wear mine proudly. I don't work for ProBuild, if you're looking at my shirt, but I also don't work for Nike, but I proudly represent my ESP pin. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. This is Linda Estrada.
Good evening. My name is Linda Estrada. I am the local president for Donna TSTA NEA, and I am proud to say that our ESP of the year for Donna is Mr. Fred Álvarez. He has become my right-hand person as far as with our association. During the spring break, I was out taking my mom to go see my nephew graduate from the Army, and something came up that we needed to go and deliver some petitions for the no vouchers to Senator Lucio in Brownsville, and so he rallied up some members, and he took them, and he's there when he's needed, so we just want to appreciate him. So I do appreciate everything he does for the association, for our members and for our students. The reason I'm up here is, I mentioned, it was for due process. Last summer, due process was passed, Coach was on the board, and I know I had his full support on that, and we had talked about it, that he would never let go of anybody without them having gone through their due process. And so we're arguing with that at this time. And so, right now, I think there's confusion. A lot of administrators, I don't know if they've been trained on how they're supposed to follow the due process, and I was wondering if there was any way that we could ask for a workshop, or some sort of meeting, so that we can sit down and discuss how that is supposed to be implemented, because it seems like some people are, some campuses or administrators are, others aren't. And so, everybody, all ESPs are now afforded a due process, which, you know, there's got to be a procedure, and so maybe we need to sit down and get some clarification on how we're supposed to implement that. And again, it's just for the benefit of both the employees and the district, you know, just for everybody to be on the same page. I do thank each and every one of you and our administrators for their continued support in everything that we do with our association. We all, everything we have, we have in mind our students, because without our students, like I tell everybody, without our students, we would not have these jobs. And we need to do them to the best of our abilities. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to request that we, for the December agenda, put what Ms. Reina talked about, and then also what Ms. Estrada talked about, as agenda items for our December meeting.
Mr. Pete Jaramillo.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, staff. My name is Pete Jaramillo, and last night, I attended a board workshop where a benefits management enrollment representative made a very good presentation to the people that were there yesterday evening. They mentioned several good ideas, including cost reduction in fees and compensation. They mentioned a benefits administration software system. They talked about stewardship program. And so, all of these are good ideas, and I just wanted to assure you that these ideas are some of the things that we've already implementing here at the district. I think that we've got a really good software enrollment and benefit administration system that unfortunately hasn't been as embraced as we would like it to be. However, I'm hoping that we can clear that hurdle and be able to work with it, so that we can see good results from it, from the use of that system. It's a very expensive system. It really works well. And so, I know that when we started, there were some kinks in it, but I think we've been able to work through some of those, and so we'll continue to do that. Also wanted to mention, with regards to stewardship program, although I'm not one to really talk much about what I do with our clients and in being involved in the communities, I do want to let you know, for those that don't know, that I do help out the community here in Donna and some of the organizations here, which I will continue to do. That's what I've always done in the past with my other clients, and so I will continue to do that. Reduction of fees, one thing I just wanted to remind you is that when we started the program with the pharmacy benefit system, although, again, anytime you have a change in a pharmacy benefit manager, there are some people that will not have their medications on the list on the new program. Those working with American Healthcare is getting better, and of course, they were, there was a lot of the employees that were taking some meds that needed to be pre-authorized, and those were weighed till the end of November. We are working on communicating with the employees, so that we make sure that the majority of them understand that they need to visit with their doctors, so that those meds can be approved or find some alternatives on that. So I think, moving forward, we want to continue to work with risk management. Try to not lose sight of the fact that my goal is still to be able to save the district money. I know there's been a lot of discussion about that. I know there was some approval of an increase in stop-loss, but, and it's early, too early to tell, but I know that I'm waiting for the report on the pharmacy for the second month, because I know the first one is already a lot less. However, you know, that's to be expected when there's a change, not as many claims are being processed currently. So I just wanted to give you some information and comments about the presentation last night, and to reassure you that we will continue to do the best of our abilities. I am, was raised and was born and raised here in Donna, and you are my key account. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Raquel Martínez.
Back in oh eight, oh nine, when my grandson Jacob played football, our extended families gave each player a little gift at each game. That's been when he was playing. We didn't have anybody up there till this year and last year with a cheerleader, so we're trying to continue the same thing. Back in September, we took on this endeavor of trying to get enough of these Pepsi cans for every football player. We contacted Person A, who contacted Person B, who contacted Person C. It was a journey. We finally got them. I believe that those who helped should always be acknowledged. Personal differences should be put aside. The last two days have been dramatic for us. I persisted, and I will still persist, that I don't see why these boys should not get these cans. I have fifty-two of them left. We need to come to a consensus on to how we do this and still acknowledge those that gave their time, their money, and their efforts to get these down here, because it was an expensive endeavor. Overnight shipping, FedEx, sixty cans of soda is expensive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President and Trustees, item number one, we have a presentation by City of Donna on projects for the 2017-2018, and I know that we have Mr. Lio Garza representing to make this presentation. Mr. Garza with City of Donna.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Mr. President, Board Members and Administration, my name is Lio Garza, and I'm the Executive Director of the Donna Economic Development Corporation. On behalf of the Mayor and the City Council, we appreciate the opportunity to come and present some of the projects that we're currently working on. With me today, we have our consulting engineers, Ramiro Gutierrez, who's with, Ramiro Gutierrez Engineering. You want to, do they normally stand in the front when they make their presentation? Or?
Right here.
Right here? You want them to do it out here? Okay. We also have Mr. Milos Salinas and Mr. Hector Moreno with Richard LaFever Engineering Management Consulting. And so what we're going to do is we're going to, where's my help? Oh, there it is. Is that it right there? Oh, sorry. I thought I put it the wrong way. So, some of the projects that we're going to talk about, they directly correlate with a lot of the campuses that are within the Donna ISD. And so, we've been, we thought it would be a great idea to sit down and share with you some of the exciting things that are happening. Two weeks ago, we came and we met with your Superintendent, Mr. Castillo, and his Executive Council. We made an extensive presentation. It took a little more than an hour. We can be as brief as you want. We see the agenda, and we know it's a pretty extensive agenda, so we're going to try to be brief. However, we're willing to answer as many questions as you have, should you have any additional questions regarding some of these projects. We're going to go over some of these, including North Avenue Road Extension and Huddle Drain Improvements. We talk about Valley View, road improvements, South Avenue Drainage, Redskin Street Widening and Drainage Improvements, and Redskin Water, wastewater improvements. So, we're going to start off with, the first project is on the west side of town, and essentially, the city is undertaking some of the project of improving the drainage along Huddle Road and Valley View Road. And I'm going to have our engineer come in and talk a little bit about this. But you all, and of course, the community is very well aware of some of the issues that we have on this part of town. Huddle Road does not have the adequate drains. In fact, it has no drainage. When the road was improved, it's a state road, it's not a city road, but when the state road was improved many years ago, it was not given the proper drainage that it should have been given. And so, over the last twelve months now, we've been working on acquiring right-of-way, acquiring easements, and putting together the plans in order to try to make this as painless and as easy and economically feasible as possible. So, can you see the cursor? Basically, everything east of Huddle Road, Scobie and that area, no drainage. And then over to the west, including Dora, South Side Middle School, would be hopefully affected positively by this. We think we've put together a good plan, and we'd like to see if, what you think about this. So, let's go ahead and move on to, go ahead. I'm going to have Milos Salinas now. Go ahead and go over these plans.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board Members. Milos Salinas, Vice President with LaFever Engineering. We've been working with the city on this project, as Mr. Garza was mentioning. The existing watershed between the Expressway and Business Eighty-three along Huddle currently doesn't have the proper drainage or detention requirements. So there's, as you mentioned, there's a lot of flooding there, and so what we're proposing with this project is to widen Huddle between the Expressway and North Avenue, and extend North Avenue from Huddle to Billman. And that way, that connection there would be another route to Dora School, and we would also be installing underground storm sewer to collect the drainage in this area. This is basically a phase on the full drainage improvements that the city's wanting to do. I'm going to go to the next slide.
Would that road run out in front of? Sure. Would it run on the north side of South Side?
Yes.
Which one is South Side?
South Side Middle School is here.
Yes. So, basically, north right now runs from Valley View to Billman, right there on the, if you notice right there where it has a curve. So right now, that road there is a dead end. So this, by doing this extension, buses and civilians would be able to drive, and it would ease traffic from Huddle to Valley View, and basically have two different routes. Any other questions on this slide?
So, if you notice, there's actually a little curve, because North Avenue would not line up with the current North Avenue. So we're going to, so one of the areas that will call to your attention in the next couple of slides is that curve right here. In order to make that happen, some of the property is going to be affected. But as he mentioned, the future North Avenue improvements, those plans are already complete at a hundred percent. We're still looking to secure a little bit more funding for it and some right-of-way. However, the drainage would begin really, probably in the next thirty days.
Again, as Mr. Garza was mentioning, basically, this underground infrastructure, drainage infrastructure, what we're proposing is to outfall right there, if you notice, here in this area here, and we're proposing a drainage ditch there, to be able to route it to an existing outfall, which we'll be showing on another slide. I'm going to go ahead and hand this to Mr. Ramiro Gutierrez. This is some improvements that are being done to Valley View Road.
Hello. My name is Ramiro Gutierrez. I'm the President of our Gutierrez Engineering Corporation, and I am the, my firm is the one working on Valley View Road for the City of Donna. And basically, what I'm trying to express here is that Valley View Road currently, you all understand the conditions in front of South Side Middle School. In front of South Side Middle School, it is paved, but then, once you go south of the middle school, all the way to the railroad tracks in Business Eighty-three, it's pretty much unpaved and in terrible shape. What the city is going to do, we're going to build a curb and gutter roadway all the way to the railroad tracks, and so you'll have curb and gutter all the way from North Avenue to the railroad tracks afterwards. And in front of the middle school, there's some sections that were, there's some potholes and a few things that need to be taken care of that I'll be taking care of in front of the middle school, and we'll have a overlay to where, at the end of the project, all the way from North Avenue to the railroad tracks, you'll have a new surface with hard mix.
So which direction does the drain flow? Once you all are said and done, which direction is it flowing, the outflow on Valley View?
On Valley View, we're going to drain everything to that new ditch that we're proposing that Mr. Salinas was talking about. That's going to cross Valley View Road. I don't know if you can see my cursor. It's gonna, if you look at the middle section, about in the middle, there's where the new ditch is going to cross Valley View Road. It's flowing from the east to the, and from the west to the east, and then, once it gets to the irrigation canal, it'll, there's an existing ditch that goes north, and the water flows under the Expressway, and that's the route that it's going to drain.
And the gentleman behind you is the engineer working on this project?
We're working on different parts of the --
There's different projects, so they're each working on sections of it.
Okay, so there's going to be an outflow now of all that existing area of what we're talking about, flowing into the main ditch, which is access of the main canal that crosses the Expressway.
Correct.
I just want you guys to realize something. I own several hundred acres on the north side of the Expressway, and when the Expressway was renovated this last time, they tapped into that main ditch. So now, all of us that own property over there, farm-wise, agriculture-wise, we normally always drain into those ditches. Now the Expressway is draining in there. That floods that drainage ditch to its max, where our fields are not draining anymore.
As a matter of fact, we brought that issue up to both, to two different entities, the RMA, the Vado County RMA, has an integral part of this, because they're putting in the new, the new IBTC, the International New Expressway that's going from the north, from the south side of the bridge, basically, the Donna Bridge, all the way to the north side of, to the east side of Edinburgh. And that's crossing right through what you're talking about. And they are very aware, people have made them very aware of the problems that have been caused by the water, so that is a big plan on what they intend to address.
So my concern, too, is when we have these splash floods of three to six inches, where is that water going to go when we already have a whole drainage ditch? And it's impeding, again, personally, it's impeding me, when this happens. Now you're going to tap in some more, and somebody's not doing their homework here, because the capacity's already reached because of the Expressway. So you guys need to keep that in mind, because here, you're saying we're going to have outflows, and you're really not going to have an outflow.
Well, like we said, those good questions have been brought up to both, and I said there's two, because north of the Expressway, it's not a RMA anymore, now it's Tech Stop.
Correct.
And so, I think they've both been made aware, but we'll bring it up again. And, oh, and by the way, we've also been meeting with the counties, with the Drainage District Council, so I'm just seeing, well aware of the problems that we're facing.
Can they widen these ditches, or, you know, make them deeper?
Part of this project is going to create, the new ditches are going to provide additional volume for storage, and the pipe under the Expressway is not going to be improved, so we're not really having any additional water crossing the Expressway. It's all going to be detained in the ditches that are going to be built.
On the south side.
On the south side of the Expressway.
A retaining pond or something?
It'll be slowly, it'll be slowly released.
It'll hold the water during the peak of the storm, and then, after the storm event passes, that the water will be able to drain north, under the Expressway. Now, again, these are not being designed for a hundred-year storm, I mean, they're more of a ten-year storm. So there's always a chance that they could, you could still have flooding, but the drainage situation will be greatly improved.
It's greatly improved for minimal rains, but I'm still concerned about the three, four, five-inch flash flood type rains that we typically have here in the valley.
Yeah. Just go on to the next slide, maybe they can get a better idea.
So as they were mentioning, going back to an overall picture of what we were talking about earlier, if you notice in yellow, that's basically where that curve is to connect the extension of north from Huddle to Billman. And there in red, that's what we're proposing to acquire right-of-way for that drainage ditch. That's a hundred twenty feet wide, and it goes along from that north, from that north end of the property, goes south, and then goes west, all the way up to Valley View, and that's our portion of the ditch. And from there, there's a covert crossing Valley View, and then from there, Mr. Gutierrez is proceeding with the rest of the drainage improvements that, as it pertains to the drainage ditch. And again, this area here in red, that's shown inside the school property. And, and again, this area here in red, that's shown inside the school property. The school property right now has, has a, an existing ditch there along the south section. And right now, that, that area is basically retention. It just, it, it just basically stays there, doesn't have an outflow. So, by proposing this drainage ditch, it's also gonna allow relief for the school to have, to have an outflow.
And it's gonna flow south and then west?
Yes, so, so ba- so basically going, going all the way back to, to Huddle, we have some, some proposed drainage infrastructure. That's gonna be piped along that north extension to, to Billman Road. It'll outfall into the, into the proposed drainage ditch. From there, it runs south and then west, all across Valley View. And then from there, Mr. Gutierrez is, you know, proposing the extension of that drainage ditch that will eventually outfall to the existing covert at the expressway. And, and again, that, that covert at the expressway is not being upgraded. So this is, so again, this is what we're proposing to acquire, to be able to, to install this infrastructure. The construction plans have been completed. And, and if you notice there on, on yellow, there's a, there, there was an existing north Alamo, there's a small little sliver there. That, that was an existing north Alamo easement that we're proposing to relocate to be able to, you know, connect north.
How many feet north of, is this proposed truck stop gonna be from that existing line that you're gonna, or that, the line that you're planning to put in east and west?
The, it's just north.
But now, is all their parking lot and everything gonna flow into your, your drainage that you're putting in?
Yes. And, but their, their detention, their detention is being taken into consideration on this drainage ditch. So we're basically detaining for a twenty-five year storm on the portion inside of the school. This area here is a blow up of that yellow area where, where, where we're proposing to connect north. And that's a point fifteen acres. And this is the, the, the utility easement that belongs to North Alamo, that was dedicated on the, on the school plat that, that we're proposing to relocate. And of course, this is a four point eighty-five acres where we're proposing to install the drainage ditch. And again, we've, we've met with the Drainage District General Manager. And they're entertaining, they're, they, they like the project and they're entertaining to assist the city with in-kind services to, to assist with the, with the digging of this ditch.
And this drainage ditch is gonna be on the easement of the DISD?
It would actually be inside of, of the ISD school property.
Oh, the entire ditch will be?
The entire ditch.
Well, we're requesting is a dedication and then we would take on the expense of moving your fence over to the other side that we wouldn't be, kind of dangerous.
What happens to that road that's existing there now?
That road, that road actually remains the same and we're actually including some, some field drains.
Billman Road is also gonna get improved, but it's not part of this.
It's not part of this part, correct.
Because we're not, we're not gonna infringe on, on, to improve Billman Road.
And I'm assuming, and I, pardon me trustees for asking these questions, but I've always noticed that when you look from the expressway, the frontage road, looking south down Billman Road. The, the ISD has a fence that looks like they're already encroaching on, on the road. Survey stakes have already been looked at because if you look at it from, like I said, from, from the frontage, looking south. You, you're looking smack right into the, the school playground's fence. You say all that's gonna be moved over or because you're gonna have to be putting a ditch in there?
So ba- so, yes, we've surveyed that area and basically where the, where the plat, where the property corners are. There's a ten foot, ten or fifteen foot north Alamo utility easement. And so basically, this ditch would be west of, west of that. But we would relocate the fence to the west side of the drainage ditch.
The ditch.
Correct.
So basically, what you guys are asking is, you're gonna be asking us to, to give up four point four?
Four point eighty-five acres.
Of our, our property. To give it to the city as?
For drainage. And again, it would, it would also pick up the, the existing detention ditch that, that the, that the school currently has. Again, that, that ditch right now does not have an outflow. So right now, it's a, just retention. It's just, it's just standing water.
How deep is that retention pond?
The existing?
Uh, it, it, it varies, it varies between, between three and se- six to seven feet.
So that was already when, when Southside was, was engineered, that the retention pond was already dedicated as a retention pond or?
No, it's just on your property. It was never dedicated.
On, yeah. And so it, it was just a drainage easement, but it was never really dedicated because it didn't have an outflow at that time.
It doesn't have an outflow. It's basically a breeding ground for mosquitoes. The, the water doesn't go anywhere, so when it rains, it's just kinda.
We've got, you know, I've noticed that, that a lot of our schools, our land schools have big retention ponds. And basically, all it does is hold water. You have to sit there till the water goes down and, and, you know, hope, like you said, it breeds mosquitoes and stuff like that.
Basically, I mean, we could have a conversation on a lot of those problems that the city has. Unfortunately, many years ago, when many of these schools were built, they weren't really, they didn't tie the drainage, the, the retention ponds to the actual drainage. Or there was no drainage. So there was nowhere for it to go. And so that, that's, that's some of the position we're calling.
Is DISD gonna be compensated for this?
Uh, we're asking for you to dedicate it, so.
And, and legal? I mean, is this all within our rights to be?
We have to sit down and look, yeah, of course. We have to sit down and look at the feasibility and the.
Because this is a taxpayer's.
And by the way, we're not, we're not gonna keep it. We're gonna turn around and dedicate it to the county. We're gonna, we're gonna dedicate it to the Del County Drainage Ditch. So they continue to maintain it. They're in the business of making sure that these remain effective.
And, and again, this is, this is a phase for these drainage improvements. The, the city plans to extend this, this ditch actually south on Billman. And then east up to Huddle to be able to relieve the drainage in the, in that community, in that area there, that watershed along Huddle, where, where all those subdivisions are.
With the outflow going, uh, west?
The, the outflow doesn't change. Yeah, correct.
But you are increasing the capacity.
Correct. We are, we are increasing the volume. Right now, there is no volume. There is no drainage ditch. So this, in my opinion, is, is a great project, not just for the city, but for the whole community.
It's also gonna free up all, all of that area to the, to the north of, north avenue and the expressway, right? That's gonna open it up for future development.
Correct. I'm gonna go ahead and go to, to the next, uh, next slide. This right here, this is a.
This is the next project?
This is, this is a, another, actually, there's three different projects in, in this location that, that we have been working on. And this is over by the high school on, on FM ninety-three, Salinas Boulevard and, and Redskins. Uh, here, what we're proposing on the first project is to widen Redskins at the intersection of Salinas Boulevard and Redskins. Uh, and up from, basically from FM four ninety-three up to the football field. And that's gonna help a lot with, with, with traffic. And then we, we, we're proceeding with extending this, this Redskins Avenue up to an existing drainage ditch. That's over here in this area where we're proposing to acquire right of way to, to be able to extend the street here from, from Woods. And then, uh, if, if you continue north here in this section here, there's, there's a, there's a future development coming up with two hundred and twenty-five apartment units. And so we're proposing to, to make this a city street so that, so that it basically connects from Woods all the way to the expressway. And we're also proposing to reconstruct North Avenue where it would be widened from Salinas Boulevard up until this area right here. Which is just past a, uh, I believe it's a, it's a hotel. I can't remember the name of the hotel. And then from there, it would continue to be a twenty-four foot road. Right now, it's probably fifteen feet wide. Uh, and then, basically, this would be another route for, for traffic after football games to either go east or west. And so, basic, uh, so, and also, we're, we're also, since, since we're already improving this area with new streets. We're also gonna install sanitary sewer along this, this street that, right now, we, we, there is no name for the street, but the construction plans are, are, are ninety percent complete.
You're talking about the street going north and, north and south from the high school, past the baseball field to?
Towards the expressway.
Yep. But, but as it is right now, existing wise, there's, there's no street here in this area between, between Redskins and North.
Property, right?
Uh, yeah, it was, yes.
Well, what used to be the kind of.
It's city, it's city property now.
What's the timeline on this one? Like a time, the timeline for anticipated start?
We're, we're actually proposing to, if, if we acquire right of way, we're proposing to go out for bids within the next month.
Okay.
Guys, on Redskins, Redskins Avenue, is it gonna, eventually it's gonna stop at the football field? Why?
The widening, the widening would, would stop approximately at this football field and then get a little narrower and then, but continue on.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I would say that, that, that would be a major way of eliminating, eliminating all the traffic between the high school and moving traffic with buses and stuff north.
Yeah, I feel like this came up when we were talking about the construction at W A Todd.
Yeah. And.
In fact, on that, trustees, that is, that is a classic example that if, if all this goes through, it is a true, true outlet to get you, uh, to, to the frontage road. Prior to, we talked about Redskins Avenue, but we were locked in. So doing this definitely will give us a true outlet in addition to the.
It's not just for your football games.
Yeah. Right, no, that's, that's all time.
Now, why, why wouldn't you make it wide all the way to, if there's gonna be an apartment complex and, you know, the community's gonna be growing. You're gonna have a lot more traffic and then ten years down the road.
It's really just funding and, and acquiring additional right of way.
Because the standard street is thirty feet wide, right? Curved, back, curved, curved.
On, on this case, we have a, a thirty-seven foot back to back from FM four ninety-three up to, uh, right just, just past of the entrance to the parking lot to the football field. And then from there, it narrows down to a twenty-four foot road that, uh, that would have basically roadside ditches with grade inlets to eventually get the drainage out to that existing drainage ditch located east.
Is that ready? Yeah, I could see the, 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 I mean, if you would go full thirty foot all the way to the back, I mean, I, it's what, I'm gonna tell you right now, that back road is, do you have a name for it?
I think, uh, I, I think it's, it's Redskins. I think it's Redskins.
Well, Redskins.
Yeah, yeah. I know the Redskins goes east, west, but I think Redskins actually goes up north.
It just, it, it goes, it actually curves and goes down to Woods and it's still Redskins. But if we're gonna extend it all the way now to, to the expressway, then, then probably the proper thing would be to, to change the name so that, so it has its own, its own.
Yeah, because it would be a north and south.
Exactly.
I mean, I can see the, the possibilities of relieving a lot of the, uh, traffic congestion around the high school, the baseball field, football field, Todd, you know, that.
Yeah. And al- al- also this, you know, when, in, in doing this, this reconstruction of the road and extending the road. We're also proposing to do underground drainage system. And that would.
It'd be curb and gutter.
A curb and gutter up to the football field and then, of course, it would be roadside ditches, but.
You, you mentioned that the condo, I'm gonna refer to it as a condo property.
Yeah, the condo property is the very last.
But the city acquired that and you're saying that, that you're, you're marking that as future.
It's under contract with, uh, a governmental entity to build, actually on that ten acre and the ten acre next to it.
Why can't we, uh, expend, uh, extend the cost to the developer who's gonna develop that property and tell him, hey, you, we want the full thirty foot back to back?
What, what we're getting from them is, is some right of way. Yeah, we're, we're having to.
We're getting this right of way on the, on the east side.
Some drainage and some, we're.
Yeah, but I mean, if it's gonna cost the city more money to widen the road from, from the stadium all the way over there. I mean, I think that, I mean, we should pass the, the development costs onto the developer. You know, I mean, I mean, he's gonna have, what did, what'd you say, two, three hundred?
About two hundred, two and a quarter.
So I'm just doing a time check. We've been on this topic twenty-seven minutes. So I'm just thinking, is there a way, should we, is the next step, we, we might need to bring agenda items to December meeting or?
We're not asking for you to vote on anything tonight.
No, yeah, we don't have anything on, uh, the agenda for that.
Anything, you know, we'll be happy to provide, discuss to you with any of the, you know.
We can have a workshop for something like this. This is, take it along.
Again, these easements, we've already done the paperwork, so we, we can have that workshop.
If we get more of that information ahead of time to be able to read it or be prepared for whenever an agenda item needs to be on the agenda, then that's fine.
Right, on this one, Mr. Garza and company, the, was there something else that you needed to, to, to brief?
The last thing that I didn't mention is that we actually can't, at this point, we wouldn't even be able to go further east. Because the school district, uh, they, I think you control most of that, I think there's a fence or there's, it's blockaded, barricaded.
Right. I could, just to kinda close out on this, on this project here. The, the drainage is pretty ba- pretty, pretty bad also in this area, so this, this drainage system would pick up the, the parking lot from the ditch also. Again, this is, this is the right of way that, that we're requesting. It's one point four two three acres, ten feet along Redskins and, and forty feet, uh, north and south from, from Woods to Redskins. This is a, a, a separate project that Mr. Gutierrez is working on.
AP Solis.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to be brief on this one, but this is South Avenue view, going up, going up and down, this, this is Solis Middle School. And, and we got South Avenue, the blue, the dark blue area is, uh, areas that flood pretty bad when, when you get a, a heavy rainfall. I mean, we're talking a depth of about twenty-four inches of water in, on the street and cars having to drive through that. So this is a significant problem. And what we're proposing to do is construct a ditch that runs from what, east, east to west, behind the developed area. The ditch would be in the, in the field, agricultural field. And we would have to construct large drain structures from the intersection of Eleventh and South. And over here on, uh, on the next street is Ninth and, and, and South. And then, we'd like to have another big structure going through the east boundary of the, of the middle school property. And with these three large structures, we'd be able to get all this water that stands in the, on the streets and put it into these drain ditches. And then that di- that ditch would be, would have a structure crossing under the canal and then turn south and go drain on the south side of, of Stites. Actually, quarter mile south of Stites, we, the improvement would, would extend it to a quarter mile south of Stites. And after that, it'll be draining south all the way to, to the floodway eventually. But, uh, these ditches are gonna be large ditches and, and they will be able to hold all this water that currently stands on the streets. And it'll significantly eliminate the amount of water that, there. And what we'd be asking from the school district is a thirty foot easement along the east edge of the property so that we can construct a, that, one of the large drain structures.
And ruin the underground.
Is it, okay. I would say it's underground.
Underground. What, what's gonna go through the school property would be a pipe underground. The, all the ditches would be south of the, of the school property.
Yeah. I think the last thing that we have is, um.
A real quick question, when, when, whenever this gets done, will it be done like during the summertime when there's not a lot of kids around the school?
We took schedules probably for this coming summer if, if things move as fast as it can, if they can go.
That would be my concern is if you're gonna have heavy equipment out there and we're having school.
Yeah. You don't wanna be interfering with, with the noise and all that.
Um, the last thing, uh, we wanted to talk about is the water tower that's going up on the north side of the expressway. It's, uh, on the corner of Salinas and, and you all know where the water tower is at. Uh, the city is proposing, it's a, it's a one million gallon water tower that's essentially gonna replace the two half million tanks that we have. Uh, and what we're proposing to do is along the expressway facing south, we wanna put the city logo. But we also wanna make sure that the, the school district gets included on that. So on the west side, if you're coming from McAllen and you're looking towards Donna, the, the water tower would be on the left hand side. We wanna, we wanna put in a Donna North logo on there for everybody to see. And coming from West Lico, we want the logo to have the Donna Red. And actually, this was the initial one, but we wanted to make sure that we had included the, you know, the, that it says the, you know, the sixty-one. Honors of the sixty-one state champions. So we wanted to bring that to your attention and hopefully you'd be okay with it.
Awesome.
But, uh.
The only thing I would propose is we, is just 'cause we have a lot of schools that aren't the high school. The only thing I would propose is we, is just because we have a lot of schools that aren't the high schools, and we have the D, I think that more represents us as a district. So I don't know who is weighing in, but that would be my two cents. But again, I'm not gonna be fighting for that, that's just my two cents there.
I mean, you could collectively, if you wanted to, you could collectively just let us know, or if you wanted to make it more formal and put it on the agenda.
Mister Superintendent, that's my two cents there.
But that's up to you, I mean, what you want, the logos.
I think we're kind of headed in the same direction, but obviously we'll entertain other ideas. But exactly what Mr. Garza mentioned, the west side would be representing Donna North, and the east side would be Donna Redskins. And north and south would be taken by the city as a logo.
Yeah, just the south side.
The south side, right. And so we're kind of looking at what other communities do, they wanna look at what, the varsity, bottom line. When you grew up, what do you wanna be?
Yeah, yeah.
Up there, that's what they look at.
You wanna play with the big ones. It's about, you know, I think it's forty thousand dollars or something like that to paint them. But I mean, it's something that the city would gladly do for you.
And we're working on some logos too, so we'll get together on that.
Yeah, yeah, we'd get the logos from you. The last thing I wanted to mention before we leave, thank you for the time. We know that we probably took more than we needed. But Mr. Frank Wayad is here, and Louis, Mr. Louis Solis is here. They were a big help this summer when the city undertook the paving of South Auto Road. And the coordination that it took between the two elementary schools, I don't know if you remember or even aware of what was going on, but we were rushing to get it built and get it ready before the school started. And it took an incredible amount of coordinating, we had different meetings. And Mr. Wayad and Mr. Louis Solis were a big part of planning, making sure that the deadlines came and we were under construction, complete, and all, you know, with the safety of the kids involved. So thank you for that, I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. President, trustees, item number two, Magic Valley Electric Cooperative check presentation in the amount of six thousand one hundred and ninety and twenty-three cents. I'm sorry, your name? What's your name, ma'am?
Rebecca Elizondo.
Miss Elizondo, making the presentation.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Superintendent and Board of Directors. My name is Rebecca Elizondo, I work at Magic Valley Electric Co-op, Marketing Specialist at the Co-op. I'm here tonight to present to you your share of the two thousand and fifteen capital credit, retired capital credits. Capital credits represent your ownership in Magic Valley Electric Cooperative and are one of the most unique and rewarding benefits of being a member. This benefit involves the allocation of excess revenue, called margins, in the form of capital credits. At the end of each year, after all operational expenses have been covered, we return a portion of any excess funds back to our members in the form, excuse me, in the form of capital credits. This refund represents your portion of the five point six million dollars of capital credit retirement authorized by Magic Valley Electric's Board of Directors. This evening, I'm going to present to you a check for your share of capital credits retired for your membership with the cooperative for a portion of two thousand and fifteen. The amount you received is based on the amount of electricity you have purchased. Since nineteen forty-five, Magic Valley has returned over fifty-seven million dollars to our membership in the form of capital credits. I also wanted to share with you just a few of the schools that are serviced by Magic Valley, Patricia Esgarza Elementary, Perez Munoz Elementary, Dee Singletary Elementary, Salazar Elementary, Adame Elementary, Veterans Middle School, and Donna North High School. So I do have a big check here for you to present, and it is in the amount of six thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-three cents. And this is for a portion of your two thousand and fifteen retired capital credits.
I'm gonna call on Ms. Andrew Martinez, because obviously that's gonna be deposited to accept that on behalf of Donna ISD. And if you can get over here so we can take a picture. Mr. President, trustees, item number three, Presentation of Delinquent Tax Collection Report by Leinberger, Cogan Blair, and Sampson L O P Attorneys at Law, make their presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Garcia, Michael Gano for the record.
Mr. Gano.
Partner with Leinberger. I'm here to present the fiscal year report for this last year, which obviously ran from September of two thousand sixteen through August of two thousand seventeen. As you all know, we were not the district's tax attorneys starting last fiscal year, we came in in March. So for the first seven months of this report, really, the other firm was doing the work, and we came in in March. And the way our business works, unfortunately, is when one firm is terminated, they have six months to wrap up their litigation. So basically, what that means is for the first six months, from March through August, the other firm had an opportunity to work all the accounts that were under litigation, which is a majority of your large accounts. So for the first six months of us doing our work, our hands are kind of tied behind our back because we can only work non-litigation accounts. But as of October first of this past, of last month, we're now your tax attorneys for every account. So nonetheless, I want to go through this last fiscal year to kind of bring you up to date to where the year finished, what we've done since we've taken over, and where we're headed. And I believe you have our report in your packet, so I'm gonna assume that you do, right? Okay.
Yes.
I'll try to be as brief as possible, but obviously, we try to contact all your delinquent taxpayers. We have a delinquency with the district, and we reach out to them, either telephone, through mail, or we actually do property visits. And I think that's really what separates our firm from anybody else. And if you look on page, I apologize if it's not numbered, but the third page, you'll see that over the past six months, we've actually visited two hundred and forty-four families here in the district. And we personally send, represent us from our firm to these homes, and our goal is to sit down with these taxpayers and work out some type of a payment arrangement. And we think that's what really makes a difference in getting these taxpayers to come in and start making their arreglos with us, as we call it. You'll see that we've obviously filed sixty-three new lawsuits. We currently represent the district now. We've taken over all the representation of the one hundred and eighty-four lawsuits, trying to collect just over eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. You'll see that, obviously, we had a tax sale this last month, and that's the next agenda item, so I'll get into the details of that once I'm done with this report. And then you'll see on page four, the bottom of page four, there's a comparison. And for the first six months, like I said, from March through August, you basically had two different tax firms working on your behalf. The other firm in those six months collected two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And although we had a very limited accounts from which to collect from, we out-collected them easily, out, you know, two to one. We collected five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in that same timeframe. So I'm really proud of the work that my staff did during those six months, especially considering that we did not have access to the largest delinquent accounts within the district. If you turn to page five, you'll see a fiscal year comparison. We always benchmark to the prior year to give, you know, your district a better idea of, okay, what did we collect last year? What was collected delinquent tax-wise, and what was collected this year? You'll see that last year, there was, the prior firm collecting on its own for that fiscal year, collected one point one million dollars. This year, the combination of the two split firms, we collected together nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And I'm really disappointed that that number is lower, because traditionally, when you have two firms working on behalf of the district, it's usually higher. But again, there's only so much we could do, we out-collected them two to one. And I don't wanna point any fingers, but the other firm just really failed to do any work during their last six months. But I do have some good news, and if you look at, and I apologize, I didn't include the prior years, but we actually collected for Donna ISD in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen fiscal year. So the year prior to this, one point one million, and we collected one point four nine eight million dollars during that year. So a couple of years ago, before we were terminated here in this district, we were at nearly one point five million dollars for the district. It went down with the other firms to one point one. But there's some very positive trends. And I'll tell you that for this month of October, this last month, which we're collecting now for the district on our own, without any involvement from the other firm, we collected a hundred and three thousand dollars compared to eighty-nine thousand dollars of previous year. So just for the first month alone, we've already seen an increase of about fourteen thousand dollars. And also, in the month of October, we did foreclosure program, and we sold some resale properties. And that's the next agenda item, that's gonna bring an additional one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars to the district. So I'm very proud that between what we did in October and what we've done with our tax sales, that in basically the first two months of this fiscal year, we're already gonna be ahead about two hundred thousand dollars. So hopefully, by the end of this fiscal year, now that we're representing the district alone and in our entirety, we can come back and hopefully get the district back to one point five million dollar collection.
Or better.
Or better, and trust me, you know, we always strive for better because the more we collect, the more we get paid. You know, about ninety percent of your taxpayers in this district do pay their taxes on time. And the district technically doesn't pay us for our services. We only get paid by those who pay late and when we collect that money. So it's also in our benefit to collect as much as we can as well.
Just a note to change the superintendent's name on there.
I apologize, I, was there a typo in there?
Yeah, it's, I don't even know when that superintendent was here. Just make sure that one's corrected.
Absolutely will. Yeah, I apologize for that, Mr. Garcia. I think that may have been the report that they just kind of changed from a couple of years ago. And another thing I wanna add, and this is really a big benefit to the taxpayers here in Donna ISD, is we obviously represented, you know, the school district for literally a couple of decades not too long ago. And we also represent the city, the city of Donna, we represent South Texas ISD, South Texas College in Yodalow County. And the reason why I mention that, it's very important, because all of your taxpayers here know, or for many years knew that, they go to our office in Edinburgh. We've been at the same location for many, many years, you know, we really, we haven't moved in decades. And they make, we're not regular with us, and they can sleep at night when they make that arrangement. If they can afford to pay a hundred, two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, but they make their payment, they know that we're not gonna foreclose on their property. When the district decided to change firms, what happened is those taxpayers still had that agreement with our firm, because they had to pay the taxes for city of Donna, Yodalow County, and everybody else. But they now had to make a second arrangement to pay the tax for Donna ISD with a whole nother firm. And so, and you would think conventional wisdom would tell you, well, if you only have one account to collect it, they would be able to collect more money, but that obviously wasn't the case. And I think it just added a lot of hardship to your taxpayers. So, and then that firm, within the timeframe that they're collecting for Donna, I think moved locations about three different times. So that doesn't help. But fortunately, I think we're in a good place now. Like I said, I'm very proud of the work that our staff has done. Your taxpayers can now go to one office, our office in Edinburgh, and they make their payment, not only for Donna ISD, but for everybody else. Anybody have any questions as far as the...
Mr. President, trustees, that was a presentation by Mr. Gano, and I will move on to number, item number four, Discussion and Possible Action on Approval to Accept Leinberger, Cogan Blair, and Sampson L O P Tax Resale Properties for Donna Independent School District in accordance with Texas Tax Code N dot thirty-four point oh five. And again, Mr. Gano will be making his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
I just wanna make a note at the end of it all, because it is dealing with real estate, the trustees would have to be making the motion and the vote and so forth.
That is correct, thank you, Mr. Garcia. Again, October third, just a few days after we had full access to your account, we did a tax sale. We sold twenty-one properties here within the district. We coordinated this with the city of Donna, because a lot of, in fact, if you look at the photos in your packet, you'll see that none of these twenty-one properties that we sold are homesteads, and that's very important. I don't want the district to believe that we're displacing families from their homes or kicking families out of their houses. Each one of these properties, they're empty lots or abandoned homes. So we get to do two things by doing these tax foreclosures and the taxes. These are actually very beneficial tax sales. One, obviously, we recover a good amount of money for the district, for the city and everybody else involved, but really, we help clean up the city, if that makes any sense. All these people, these investors that buy these properties do end up fixing them up. It increases the property value, and then we start, we put them back on the tax rules. Because right now, they're, since they belong to the district, they're not on the tax rules. So there's, you should have in your packet the copy or the photos of each one of these properties. And again, once, this has been approved already by the city. Those that do fall within the city limits, and it's been approved by the county, South Texas ISD and South Texas College. Once we get your approval, we can start dispersing this money, and I wish I had a check for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, but I don't. But this is gonna be a substantial increase. Yeah, well, hopefully, at the end of the fiscal year, we'll come with a check, and we'll see what the difference is at that point.
Just one question, the amount for the school district, how is that calculated? Because I know it's, I see the, like, dividing out, opening bid, amount of bid, but how's that calculated?
That's actually a very good question, it's prorated. The school district obviously levies the highest tax rate amongst all the different tax entities. So what we do is we take proration of the judgment amount. And obviously, since the school has a lion's share of the tax burden, you recover that. For example, if you take the first one, at the time we took the judgment, there was seventy-two thousand dollars owed to Donna ISD. You're recovering, it says sixty-three percent, but that's, you're, it's kind of a misnomer, but you're recovering seventy-five thousand. So really, you're recovering about ninety-seven percent of what you were owed at that point in time, which is phenomenal, because normally, you would cover about a third of what you were owed.
And on average, how long have these properties been off the tax rules?
This one, and it varies, but usually, we don't wait more than a year. The first time we put up for sale, it's called a tax sale, and by law, we have to sell it at, the starting bid has to be the amount of taxes owed or the appraised value, the lower of the two. If it doesn't sell, then it gets struck off, and then the district holds it in trust, you become the owner. And normally, we don't wait over a year, we sell it within six months. Again, these are properties that could have been sold by your prior tax firm, but for whatever reason, they didn't. But as soon as we came in and we had access to do that, obviously, within three days, that's the first thing we did.
Am I missing anything on why we wouldn't?
No. Unless you see something there that you don't think is in line.
Okay.
Do these people still have an opportunity to come back and pay off?
That's got a right of redemption, that usually just applies, if it's a, and which is gonna be the case in all of these, because these are all non-homestead properties. They have six months from the time that it is sold the first time. Most of these are over six months old, as far as when they were actually struck off to the district, so there is no right of redemption. And if it were, if it were homestead, they would have two years from the date of the... And Ms. Lane, if I can give you just some peace of mind, most districts, most tax jurisdictions do approve them. It's only when a city or a school would like to acquire the property, perhaps to build a school, a park, or something like that, that's usually when they'll deny a bid and say, well, let's offer a private bid, and then we'll do that from time to time.
Right.
Really, you know, this is kind of, we do all our sales by public auction, they're all held at the courthouse steps. We get about two hundred investors that show up every month to buy these properties. So we sell them for the most we can get out of it. Sometimes there is a loss, but you gotta understand that you're not selling properties with a clean title. They're buying them subject to any and all of their liens, they're buying them sight and seeing. A lot of these have impediments on the property, they gotta tear them down and, you know, start all over and whatnot, so. We feel it's the best way to move these properties back into the private sector. And you'll see, if you look at the packet, that it's really not one person buying them all.
Mm-hmm, I saw that.
Yeah, so there's, and I think that's very important to recognize, because it's not like we're selling it to one person. There's people from all over the valley that can buy these, and they have different interests for different properties. I think it ensures it's a very fair process.
Okay, any questions? Need a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Abila, second by Dr. Mary, to approve. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, sir.
And I gotta excuse myself, because I gotta run to another commitment. But look forward to coming back, hopefully, in the next quarter, and give you all an update, and I'll show where we've made significant progress at that time.
Mr. Gano, thank you very much, and again, not to be a pet peeve here, but can we check on, you said it was the board president's last name as well? It's misspelled.
Okay, I'll definitely do that.
It's spelled right, and then it's spelled wrong.
Once corrected, another page is incorrect, just for the record.
Obviously, I sign off on these reports after they're done, but I'll definitely look into that, and I do apologize for that.
No problem.
It will not happen again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number five, Mr. President, trustees, Discussion and Possible Action on Approval of Yodalow County Appraisal District Election Ballot, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, Appraisal District Board of Directors and Resolution. In your packet, you do have some information. It may be a little confusing at the beginning, but I know during our board review, we did make a phone call, got some clarification. You do have... You do have, uh, there are a total, I counted, that fifteen individuals who are nominees, and you, as trustees, have ninety-five authorized votes, Donna ISD, ninety-five. And the way this works is that, as trustees, you can give all ninety-five to each one, or you can divide all ninety-five with the fifteen, or you can not, ninety-five in half. At the end of the day, that's how many votes Donna ISD will be able to have authorization for your, um, for, for who it is that you will be casting and supporting as a nominee. And you have the information there before you. Some individuals did submit a little biography, uh, some individuals did not. So, at this point in time, unless you have a question regarding the specifics on the ninety-five votes, how they go out and what have you, then I will turn it over to, to you all for discussion, as trustees.
Okay, at this time, if you need more time to look it over, go ahead and look it over. But I'm, I'm ready to take nominations.
Okay, so I, I have four marked. Uh, I guess what I'm think, one thing I'm always looking at, um, really, in any sector of, of, um, society, is representation from people that are thinking about education and how decisions impact students. So, I look through these bios with, looking at folks who have shown an interest or experience working somehow as a board trustee, or, you know, so that's, that's some of my rationale around, uh, the four folks that I marked. So, I, I don't know how to split these, I don't know what other people, who else, other folks have marked, but...
So, you got to nominate somebody?
Well, I have four. Do you want me to just tell you the four?
Why don't you, why don't you nominate one? Uh, I think everybody should be allowed to nominate one to start with.
Okay. Pete Garcia. Pete Garcia. That's not mine.
Okay, so who's nominating, Pete? Okay. Okay, I'm going to say that Pete Garcia is being nominated by Ms. Watts, okay? Anybody else?
I'd like to nominate David Hernandez Arvazco.
David Hernandez, yes. Anybody else?
Uh, Tom Wingate.
Tom Wingate. From?
Mm, McAllen.
McAllen. Anybody else? Okay, um, basically, what, what we have so far is three. Uh, Dr. Mary?
Yes, sir.
Where would, do you, do you have a preference as to where you would like your votes to go in, in this group?
Uh, with David? I think that, we need a fourth one, don't we?
Not necessarily.
Oh, okay.
Keep in mind, the ninety-five votes eventually will go to whoever you want.
Or we can give them all to one person? So, I don't know, I know David.
I think we can do the split later. Okay, so that's, that's two for, uh, for David. Uh, Mr. Guerrero?
I want to split my votes with all three candidates.
Yes, sir.
As even as possible.
One-third, one-third, one-third. Okay, Mr. Abila?
He's gone.
He's gone?
Inex.
I'm not.
Okay.
Do you have anyone you want to nominate from this list? Rudy Ram- oh, I have him marked, too.
Okay.
Rudy Ramirez. Okay, so, uh, Rudy Ramirez is by Mr. Abila. Okay, and I will cast my vote for David Hernandez. So, I think David Hernandez came up with three and a, three and a third. Two. Uh, Pete Garcia was one and a third. Um, Tom Wingate, one and a third, and Rudy Ramirez, one. So, that's going to be fun to figure out.
I don't understand your math. I mean, I'm fine splitting the votes across, how many do we have, four?
Four.
One, two, three, four. Yeah, but we got three votes for one.
Okay, so give that one a lo- a few more. Uh, the other way you can look at it is divide, divide ninety-five by seven, and that gives each of us X number of votes.
Well, we even up a draw on them.
And then...
Thirteen point five.
It's a lot down.
Thirteen point five.
Where's my dry erase board?
That's what you get to remember, sir.
So, thirteen point five, seven votes per member, per board member.
Okay, so if we each have, let's say, thirteen votes, if you want to put it that way, I'll put seven of my votes to... Give me a second.
Tell you it up.
Pick one.
Hope you'll give it with your math, okay?
How many, how, how many nominees were there?
There was four nominated by you as the ISD trustees.
Or did I?
Okay, so this is how I would do mine. I'd do four to Wingate, three to Rudy Ramirez, and six to Pete Garcia. So, if each person wants to, let's estimate, you have thirteen votes, you want to put them all towards David, you want to put them all towards, you want to split them, that's just a way we could do it.
I think, uh, the David Hernandez one's pretty easy, it's thirteen times three, that's thirty-nine.
There you go.
And then he had one-third, so that's, um, one-third of the votes, so that's about forty-five.
There you go.
So, forty-five for him.
For who?
And that was David. And, let's see.
Uh, Ms. Watts, who, how do you want to put your votes?
Yeah, I'll just, um...
Okay, so thirteen, and then he had a one-third, so about twenty.
Sixty-five, we got thirty-five, thirty left.
To Rudy.
You want to put all your thirteen to Rudy?
Yeah.
I'm going to put all my twenty.
Okay, thirteen.
Are mine in there?
Not yet. Yours is too complicated.
Here, if I had to choose.
Is that the only one that's missing?
I've got thirteen, so it's got to be ninety-five minus thirteen.
What we got so far?
I've got David Hernandez with forty-five, Pete Garcia with twenty, and who was the thirteen?
Rudy Ramirez.
Rudy Ramirez with thirteen.
And Wingate, right?
So, you have seventeen left, unaccounted for.
So, mine are thirteen, and then there's another seven.
Well, your thirteen are going to whom?
Four to Mr. Wingate, three to Rudy Ramirez, and six to Pete Garcia.
Okay, I've got the four. How many to Mr. Pete Garcia? Six?
Six.
Okay, that gives him twenty-six.
And three.
And to whom?
Rudy Ramirez.
Rudy Ramirez, now he's up to sixteen, okay.
What's total?
I have four.
I know.
Four unaccounted for.
So, you're short four?
If you go to Rudy, you give twenty.
Can we give Rudy eight and twenty?
Yeah.
To get us to the finish line? Is this how other school districts do this?
Well, I think...
Oh, okay. Is this how other school districts do this? Are the board trustees the only ones that vote?
Yeah, give them the twenty, let's get it rolling.
Okay, so you got...
Okay, we got it.
That's it, twenty for Rudy Ramirez, and...
Plus...
That gives me ninety, that gives us ninety-five.
Yes.
So, just to recap, Pete Garcia, twenty-six, David Hernandez, forty-five, Rodolfo Rudy Ramirez, twenty, and Tom Wingate, four. This, Terry, that equates to ninety-five.
All right.
Good job, trustees.
Coming on.
So, now, uh, if, if, because this is an action item, as the trustees, one of you make the motion to make this official and second, and vote on it.
Okay, I make a motion.
Dr. Mary makes a motion. Uh, Ms. Watts, seconds, all in favor, favor?
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Consent?
Okay, Mr. President, trustees, in the consent agenda item, you have accounts payable. Are there any questions on that, and if so, Ms. Martinez is here to answer. Then we go into number two, investment report for October twenty-seventeen, the investment report.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Can we backtrack real quick? I, I, I don't know whether this falls in line with the accounts payable, uh, but Ms. Martinez, did we ever make that adjustment to the CMP department? I don't know whether...
The enduro cost?
Remember that, that we were, it was like two point something million dollars, and we were supposed to make an adjustment into the child nutrition program?
Yes, the enduro cost for the, that auditor.
Yeah, has that already been?
Yes, sir.
Where would that be found? Would it be, would it be in here?
No.
Is it just an adjustment you do? Is it...
It's a journal entry, sir, and, um, you would find it in our general ledger. When our audit is complete, it'll reflect in the financial statement, um, but until then, you won't have a...
So, for right now, the two point three million that was supposed to be going to child nutrition program, that's already been put into their account?
Yes, sir.
In the ledger, like Ms. Martinez mentioned, yes.
Do that, I thought, did we vote on that adjustment back from the summer?
No, um...
That adjustment was something that, um, was actually a directive by you, the TDA, Texas Department of Agriculture.
Right.
So, uh, there is no vote on it, because it's something that we're told we have to do.
Right.
So, we, uh, we had to move it from, um, the fund balance back to the fund balance for child nutrition.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Castillo.
That's okay, uh, under investment report, trustees, again, this is, this is something that you have there, as a report. Uh, item number three, you have the financial statement, district's financial and child nutrition program for October, for the month of October twenty-seventeen. And item four, reported monthly tax collections for the month of September twenty-seventeen, uh, which you, we just heard a report from Lombard. And item number five, approval of minutes for regular board meeting, October tenth twenty-seventeen, and special board meeting, October sixteenth twenty-seventeen, October twenty-fourth twenty-seventeen, and October twenty-fifth twenty-seventeen, on the special board meetings. So, if there are no questions in any of these, administration recommends approval.
Okay, so I have a motion?
No move.
Okay, Ms. Watts, minute, second by Ms. Sharina. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Vice President and trustees, we'll move on to district operations, DO one, architect monthly report, AROFA, status report on all of Donna ISD's current facility projects, and that report will be given by Mr. Figueroa, our, our architect of record for Donna ISD.
Glad to walk in when I guess, saw the engineers here talking to you about what the plans are over the city. Basically, this is the same layout that they showed you, and the relation of Todd Middle School really is, is what are we going to do with the water that, uh, that we're displaced once we don't, once we have building in the area. We've already talked to the city, uh, we've al- also talked to TechDoc regarding some issues, and I'll go over those with you. Uh, the main thing, I think, is, is this issue here, as, as they explained, they're trying to, 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 uh, plan some drainage system to, to, to address some of the issues they have now. There is no drainage system on Woods Avenue right now, uh, so all the water that's being collected off the building, off the properties, are actually going onto the street. And so, obviously, the idea is to try to collect that water and put it into a drainage ditch or, or a, uh, or a large holding pond, and basically, that's what they're going to be asking for the district to do as well, onsite, and then to, and then to bleed it off into their system. And so, that's what I'll be showing you here. Uh, I want to show you this, because it, it shows you the, um, the, the, the site the way it is right now. This area right here is actually that driveway on the south side, where the buses drop off, uh, I believe, let's see, um...
Special needs.
Special needs children, and, uh, there is some, there are some parking spaces, you got about twenty-five parking spaces right now for visitors. Uh, with the new building that's being proposed in that area, we're, we're going to have to displace those. And so, I just wanted to show you what was there. The, uh, the next image here, and by the way, we did have our, our last meeting with the building committee, uh, and went over these items, uh, we wanted to come to you now to start getting some more definitive direction of, of whether we want to continue on with the project or not. At this point, uh, we're proposing having these special needs over in this corner. Uh, right now, they're located in this blue area, and, uh, convert this blue area into two classrooms, like it, like we think it was originally, and, and then put the, uh, special needs children over on the east end of this addition, and then come in, right now, the bus drop off, uh, is, is right in this area, and then right back around this way, comes back around this little parking lot that's on the east side, and, uh, so we're thinking, being able to bring the, the, the special needs children's buses down this, separate them from the other buses, and bring them eventually down this way, and be able to drop the children off close to their classroom, and then, uh, go off onto Woods. You can see right here, right in this area, about right here, you probably see it better on your, um, uh, image there, is actually a curb cut for that parking area that's on the south side, it's a curb cut for an entry, and it's a one-way, it comes in and goes back out on Wood, close to the corner of Woods and Salinas. Um, that's not a very good condition, because it's so close to the corner, uh, but, so, so, in talking to the city, uh, they were kind of glad that we were going to have that congestion there, and, uh, and that, and they were okay with doing this new curb cut over on this end here. And so, that allows probably two, maybe even three small buses to be able to collect in there or to, to line up. I know, we understand that it doesn't happen right now, but eventually, or someday it might, and, uh, and also, we want to be able to have, in this area, a ninety-degree, uh, parking, when, when they come here to the corner, we want to be sure they're at ninety degrees, so they can look both directions. We don't want to have anything that was angled, that would make it more, uh, dangerous or less visible, uh, for safety. So, they were glad, the city was glad with that. The drainage issue we're talking about is being able to collect, uh, water onto the site, and so you can see these arrows here, for example, this proposed parking of about twenty-five, uh, space, twenty-three spaces, uh, would actually slope and, and, uh, divert water into this small detention area, get it underneath this driveway, back into this detention area, which is actually a swell, would go along the, the south end, and then, and then connect beyond, back onto this, uh, little, little, um, I'm going to call it a little bar ditch, it's right there, uh, from the, uh, football parking to the, the drive down on the, on that side, same side. And as you can see, when you're out there, there's an elevation of about three or four feet difference there, and that's why you have that little bar ditch, collecting that water, and then from there, that water's going back to the north, back to where the city... And then from there, that water's going back to the north, back to where the city's proposing doing their work. And so that's, that's what we would, would be thinking of doing. We'd also want to address the collection of water between the two buildings. Get this water off of here and then connect it into the same system. We know that there's been a, a, a problem here in this area here on the, on this southeast corner. There is a concrete slab there with a little swell that kind of diverts the water back into that south parking lot, and from there goes into the street. We want to collect that water in this, in this system as well. And so eventually, we want to connect it into this ditch. The initial discussion with the city was if they would like to have all this plumbing done underground. And so that's not, we were hoping they wouldn't ask us to do that. They haven't told us it's a demand to do it yet. But I think in, in, in talking to the engineers a few minutes ago, they're going to design their system for, for us to be able to do it either way. They're going to have a collector, a collector right here on, on Redskin Drive, and so whatever we do here, they're going to design that, that point, that end there, to be able to collect it, whether it's underground or shed above the way it is now in the bar ditch.
But that ditch right there is already covered, right?
I'm sorry?
That ditch is covered, the one you got?
No, sir, it's open.
But they're got, they're gonna, they're gonna cover it, aren't they?
You mean, there's?
Yes.
You talked a bit on, on.
Going through the expressway?
Redskin.
Yes.
Yes, theirs is going to be underground.
Okay.
Of course, it's always better to try to have everything underground.
I think he's talking about, you know where the, where the parking lot is real high and then comes down, there's a little bar ditch that.
Yeah, but they can cover that underground, they can cover it a lot better.
Yeah, we can put some inlets there and have piping underground, and then that while it's coming off, will still shed into that area, collect there and then go into the system. And back all the way around Redskin Drive into their, their proposed detention area. I think it's a good thing to do, trying to save some money, you know, that may be one way to do it, but it really is the best way to do it is go underground. Underground, yes, sir. So, so then we'll look at it here, basically, in talking, when we were saying about the different areas here, there's a little bus drop off area here, the life skills, special needs children would be in this, in this corner here, which would have an area as big as they had before. We needed to make that a little bit bigger, we could, we could extend it a little further out this way if we needed to do something like that. But basically, we're looking at, at fifteen regular classrooms and the, and the life skills, which would be the sixteen. Of course, you would have two additional classrooms over here, so that gives you basically eighteen classrooms and the life skills. Actually, I'm sorry, seventeen classrooms and the life skills.
Plus the two bathrooms?
We're looking at, yes, right now, we're, we're tying into the entrance that's here now, we're thinking of taking that whole canopy out, reconstructing that into a new connecting corridor to the, to that side entrance. And making, possibly, we're talking now about the storage room, maybe putting an office right here, so it's visible all the way down this corridor, and then, of course, any activity close to there. We're also thinking of putting these bathrooms on this side so that we have a cleaner wall on the outside. But again, you know, kind of keeping these same spaces. The mechanical rooms, we're going to see how much of that we actually need once we start schematic design or design development. If we don't need that much mechanical area, and if we can combine some of those spaces, we'll be able to do that. Maybe if we can, be able to get another classroom in there. It just depends how much space we have there. We did want to have some, some storage areas back in here somewhere. And then these are the other classrooms and life skills. And then, of course, we'd have a, a connecting corridor here that, I mean, a canopy to be able to, to have cover for inclement weather days for those children, and all the other children as well. And then we would connect into, we're looking at maybe connecting a, a, this canopy here with a canopy that's right in this area, and then that'd be all, all covered with a canopy. Not an enclosed area, but just a canopy. And we're looking here at about twenty thousand square feet, we're averaging right now about, about two hundred, two hundred dollars a square foot, so we're looking at about, about four million dollars. With the offside utility, or the onsite utilities there, we're looking probably another half million, so we're, we're right in there, I think, in the ballpark, about four point five million. Yes, ma'am.
I don't see the bathrooms or the staff.
Oh, that's, that's what we're going to convert this area here, and those, we have two offices, those are actually going to be the bathrooms. This is all very, very schematic, I was just to give you an idea of square footage of what we could do. The next step is to sit down with staff and finalize that layout. Like I said, we, we internally have had other thoughts about what we could do with the space. Y'all have any questions? I think the next thing is we just need some directive on whether we want to proceed or not. I know it's not an action item, but just, we talked a little bit about schedule and have it ready for the next school year, so we just need to work a schedule that fits up.
When do you need to start if you want, if they want to have it ready by the next school year?
Well, we need to start right away, I think, because there's some things that need to be done, there'll be some soil testing, some surveying work that needs to happen still. We're looking probably eight, eight to ten months construction, so you're looking at getting onto it right away.
So what is it that you need from us? Are you going to need for us to have an action item?
Yes, sir.
And you'll, you'll bring those, those items to us?
Yes, sir.
As agenda items?
That's, that's the next step.
Right, Mr. Figueroa, appreciate the presentation. One of the things that Mr. Haiden, we mentioned to, to convey to you to have like a, a little timeline specifically with any items that require board action so we can start working away from current to future.
I'll have that with me for your next meeting.
Right, okay. And right now, unless we have a special board meeting, the next regular board meeting is going to be December the twelfth, twelve. But we may be having special board meeting now and then.
Y'all let me know, we'll be ready.
Okay.
Right, sir.
So just to be clear, the, the goal here is to get rid of the portables so that students are all in classrooms, is that the?
Yes.
That's correct.
I know I'm saying the obvious, but I just want to be clear that that's the goal, and so, but the portables will still be there after we build the.
No, they'll be removed.
Okay, and here's my take on this, I mean, I know the construction committee deserves time in looking through different options. So, you know, I'm, I'm trusting you all that sit on the construction committee, you know, that you've done your due diligence. My one request would be from now on, we always have an architect's monthly report in the agenda. I think every month, we need to see, Mr. Castillo, we talked about a five-year plan and how, I think we need to have regularly the five-year plan for facilities and maintenance construction, so that we can always keep an eye on like, okay, here we are right now, but this fits in, in year X of the five-year plan. Or we're using X amount of dollars this year, but we anticipate this is the construction that's coming up in FY eighteen, FY nineteen. Because we have to see the long, long road in addition to seeing the thing that's right in front of us. So if we can do that, and that would just be a part of the, this, this report.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Figueroa.
Thank y'all very much.
Mr. President, trustees, moving on to DO two, discussion of possible action to request for proposals, RFP number zero nine one nine one seven dash three six seven, for lawn care for Garza Elementary, Muñoz Elementary, Singletary Elementary, and Adama Elementary, schools for the twenty seventeen eighteen school year with a one-year option to renew. Do you recall, it's something that we brought back, or bringing back simply because one of the schools was erroneously misplaced in there? And so unless we have any questions, this is going out for RFPs, administration recommends approval.
I assume a. Some motion by Mr. Billman, a second by Dr. Mary, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
DO three, Mr. President, trustees, discussion of possible action to reject and rebid for the RFQ number zero nine zero seven one seven dash zero four oh, to purchase six cargo vans to be used for maintenance services district-wide by Energy Management Department. And rational behind this is that, I know we had already gone through process number one, it, it, in, actually inspecting the actual size of the vehicles obviously was not going to be suitable, so in this case, our, Mr. Gonzalez and his team made a sound decision to say, you know, we're going to look at this to a good ten or more years livelihood, so they're going to, we, they're asking to go out again and, and, and rebid simply because we want to be certain that the size is going to be conducive to what their, their needs are. So that's the reason for this, so administration recommends approval.
Was the size not specified in the RFQ?
Yes, it was, obviously, when you look at a size and then you go see it up front, it, it is. It was.
Oh, okay.
So.
Make the motion, we approve.
Some motion by Mr. Robbie, not to approve. Second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to academic services, AS one. Mr. President, trustees, we have AS one, discussion of possible action on the approval of the Region One Service Center Agreement for services from the gifted and talented department for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. And what you have before you is, these are a, a coordination that we have with Region One specifically for the trainings for the gifted and talented teachers who are teaching students that are under that program, they must have the thirty hours and/or maintain on a yearly basis. And the reason why we're bringing this to you, even though the expenditure is twenty-two thousand five hundred, we don't want to be, we want to be certain that we're covered in the event that we might go over because of this particular program. But we don't foresee that, nevertheless, this is why we're bringing it to you for approval. If there are no questions, administration recommends approval on this matter.
So recommendation to approve?
Could I, I have a discussion, a question of this. Castillo, this is GT department, are they doing all these trainings on Saturday?
At this point in time, yes, we are, correct, Mrs. Bincourt, I know she's present?
Yes, we are.
Is there, I mean, is there a reason why it's being done on Saturdays and during the week, like?
I believe it's, is it an eight-hour training?
It's a thirty-hour training.
No, but on the Saturday, the day?
Yes, we actually do instead of five Saturdays at six hours a Saturday, we condense them into four, and we do eight hours on Saturdays.
And how are we coming along with those? I know, I, I think that there was a lot of teachers that still needed a lot of training, right?
Yes, there are, as a matter of fact, we will, we're, we're already planning to hold one additional thirty hour in the spring, starting in January, because after auditing records, we find that there are teacher, there, there are still teachers who are not in compliance with their required thirty hours. And it has been a struggle on Saturdays, they don't want to show up, they don't like to show up. We do what we can, honestly, it would work better during the week, but I do not have authority to proceed with during the week. I've requested, but I haven't heard back.
So I have a question on that. So are, the district pays for it?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And it's to their best interest to attend to get their certification, correct?
They are required to attend by the state, but in the past, we've struggled. This year, I have, I've been working diligently since I became the director and I, in January, actually, of last year, and trying to identify who the teachers are that have not gone through the required training. We're anticipating an audit by the state, and I don't know if they're going to be looking at teacher certi, teacher training, it's a teacher-required training, it's not certification, certification is different.
Oh, okay.
But that is a concern, that we will have teachers that are not in compliance. Last week, we spoke briefly, and I did let HR know that this needs to be, the, the training needs to be under HR because teachers know that I do not have the authority to reassign. So at some point, we do need to make sure we transition back to HR because they have that authority, I do not.
So what happens if, if, let's say you have, you know, because it's best if everybody shows up and everybody gets their, their hours?
Yes.
What happens if you repeatedly try, I mean, because that takes time for you, you have to be there on all those Saturdays, too?
Yes, ma'am, I do, I've, I've already put in about five or six Saturdays this year.
And, and is that, is there a plan in place to say, you know, we've given you this many opportunities, and the next time it's going to be up to you, you have to pay for it? Because I have mandatory meetings too, but, and if not, it's like, we're in trouble, and we have to go on Saturdays for coding.
I want to address that, Dr. Mary, and for the rest of the trustees, this particular training is, is required, as Mrs. Bincourt alluded to, if you want to be the teacher of record to be teaching the GT students, which is the one sixty-eight. So in other words, if, if a teacher says, you know what, I can't make it, et cetera, and they have not met the criteria, then they will not be eligible to teach those students. So they would be teaching the student body, so it's not like, you know, they, they know what's at stake. If they don't fulfill this, then they will be teaching the, the, the general population.
You can't be spending, you know, how many Saturdays are you going to be spending? So I mean, it, you know, there has to be a limit as to how much you allow. Everybody's busy on Saturdays.
We're, we're limited to forty slots for the, for what we pay, and it is a, a, it is a copyrighted training, so I can't do them. It has to be through Region One. But what we find is that they sign up, and then if something comes along, they don't, don't show up, and we've already expanded our forty slots.
Your teachers are being compensated for that Saturday?
No.
No.
For, with pay?
Yes.
No, sir.
So they show up mandatory?
Well, they're supposed to be mandatory.
Aren't they, the GT teachers, aren't they at a higher level, or? I'm trying to, how is a GT teacher different from a?
The population that they teach, which is the GT students.
They don't get additional stipend, they don't get a?
No.
No, not, not.
And then also keep in mind, trustees, because obviously, this seems to be a point of interest, that this training is ongoing all year, especially in the summer. When you hear the word GT, that's gifted and talented. At the high school, you're predominantly going to have pre-AP and advanced placement, AP. Those individuals have to be doing the same type of training, except we don't conduct those, the college board has to do that in there, you have to go to the university level. They don't get paid for that either. And sometimes, in that case, it's in the summertime, for the most part, we want them in the summer so that we can plan according to the schedules. But in this case, it's year-round, so these individuals that we have right now, we are, as Mrs. Bincourt alluded to earlier, we're trying to get them to be up to speed, so we're bringing it to them, we're accommodating them, because these trainings take place in the summer as well.
So then you, you have a slot, you pay for that teacher A, teacher B, and neither one show up, they've already utilized that spot, the district's out? That money?
Yes, unfortunately, that's the way it works.
And you can't call a replacement, right? Because you've already registered them and everything.
Region One had, the past had been very good about allowing us to exceed the slots, and, and I know that at points, we were allowed to bring in as many as sixty teachers. But this, a few months ago, they had a meeting, and now they're absolutely limited to the first forty, and then after that, the window shuts, no one else can register.
So what do you do with those that don't show up, and the district's out money, right? Because you can't refund it?
No. We let the principals know, and we'll send an email, the teacher didn't show up, can you please let me know what happened? But sometimes, they do have emergencies, last time, last week, last Saturday, somebody fell and hurt themselves. We understand those situations, but there are some teachers that just will not show up.
So what happens to the students that they teach?
Well, this is where we were discussing that they need to be reassigned away from teaching GT kids, because otherwise, we're not in compliance.
Exactly.
Yes.
That's, that's why I'm asking all these questions.
Yes, I understand.
We have to maintain our compliance.
Yes, that, that's one of the things with me, is we always safeguard the district. We want to make sure that the children in the district are protected, and making sure that they go through that training. And that's why we're offering another training that we normally would not have offered in the spring, and, but.
Do you think we would have better attendance if, if these trainings were, were scheduled during the week?
Absolutely.
Let's do it.
But then what happens?
Right, but just keep in mind, trustees.
You take away from.
From instruction.
From instruction.
Right, and keep one thing in mind.
And then you're not going to have, I mean, why are we, why are we changing, if it's been done for so many years?
But the thing is this, that some of the other departments are having trainings during the week.
Well, yes, and that's what I was going to allude to, Mr. Figueroa, that you've got many other representations, you have your science department, bilingual, they're coming in on Saturdays. One of the individuals that we're doing during the week is your pre-K K in first, because sometimes, they, they have multiple, they wear multiple hats.
Okay.
Okay, and so not only do they have to come into your pre-K K in first and second because of the, the childhood literacy that we have, but they also may be part of the GT, and they also may be part of bilingual, and so they, they're spread out. Science has a lot of Saturdays as well, in terms of their trainings. So yes, we don't, we, we want to minimize your, during the day, because then you also have the dilemma about substitutes.
Yes, and then it's double, I mean, it's like you're paying twice. You're paying for substitute, the kids aren't getting the instruction, the teacher's out, you know, it's like.
Okay, can, can they be scheduled during the, all these days that we have built into the calendar?
I'm sure that Mr. Castillo can answer that better than I can, I, I.
And then again, keep in mind that because this year, we're doing the one sixty-eight days of instruction, and as you all know, a teacher is the one that guides the entire academic calendar, they're, they by contract have to be a hundred and eighty-seven days. And so we are looking at doing some of these trainings, we can actually earmark the time schedule for that during the red square days that we refer to. This is year two that we're working on for this particular calendar. So we've got several things that we have in, in mind at the end of, of the six weeks. And we're not only trying to do the summer school, we're trying to do the curriculum writing, we're trying to do any and all assessments that are taking place. When before, the teacher would have to come in afterwards, and the district would have to pay additional funds for that. So we are working our way, we, it takes coordination, because again, we have. So, we are working our way, and we, it takes coordination, because again, we have multiple departments. Special Ed is another one that has to go through a lot of trainings as well.
I think before we get too far down into solutions, like, we need to be clear on what the actual problem is. So, for example, number of G, of teachers teaching G.T. students, of those number of teachers, how many are currently compliant up-to-date? And of the, that num, and of the total number of teachers teaching G.T., how many are not compliant? And of those, how many are signed up for this training? And of those forty, how many are not showing up? I think we really have to, like, narrow in before we get too far down into.
Yes. And that's one area where I'd like to work with H.R., because they're in a better position. What I did was, I asked the campuses to provide the names of the teachers that were not in compliance, because sometimes, they're the holders of their certificates, since we weren't doing a very good job of, of keeping copies of those. Campuses sent me information, and in some cases, teachers were left off. So, I've never been able to get a really good handle of that. That is something that H.R. could help me with, because H.R. do have, they, they do have the names of all of the teachers that are stationed at any particular campus.
Yeah, that's great. Not a problem.
Yes.
One of the things that I've, you know, I don't know, this is something maybe we can address, Mr. Castillo, is I noticed that all the other departments have numerous strategists with their department, and I know Miss Ben Court doesn't have any strategist. She's got one secretary. Is there any way that we can try to get a strategist for her?
Okay, obviously, yes.
It's not on the agenda, personnel.
But we'll address that at a later time. It's just, again, we've got to look at the, the services being provided right on G.T., and this is what we're looking at, and that's what it is. So, Administration has got approval, recommends approval on this?
It's a recommendation to approve the Region One Service Center Agreement.
Motion.
It's a motion by Mr. Abila.
Second.
Second by Ms. Reyna. All in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. A.S. Two.
A.S. Two, Mr. President, Trustees, A.S. Two. Discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of sing, spell, read, and write consumables, English and Spanish, and additional phonics skills for pre-K. through second grades for the 2017-2018 school year. And there, you've got the three quotes. What Administration is recommending is to go with Brilliant at the expense of thirty-two-thousand-two-zero-seven and eighty-one cents. This is being funded by the bilingual department totally. If there are no questions, Administration recommends approval.
Motion.
There's a motion by Mr. Guerrero, second by Ms. Watts, to approve. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor, in favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
A.S. Three, Mr. President, Trustees, discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of Learning A through Z online program that provides level readers English and Spanish, ebooks for students to read and listen, English and Spanish teacher lesson plans, evaluation materials, slash component, tracking reports, and teacher training resources and guided reading. And again, in your package, you do have that this Learning A through Z is a cooperative from Region One, so they have already done all the bids and, and the proposals. And so, at this time, Administration is recommending Learning A through Z for the amount of seventy-nine thousand-five-hundred-and-ten-seventy cents. And this, again, is for the early childhood. So, Administration recommends approval.
Okay, there's a recommendation to approve. Need a motion?
I move we approve.
It's a motion by Ms. Reyna, second by Mr. Abila. All in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
A.S. Four, Mr. President, Trustees, discussion and possible action to approve Lead Forward to provide professional development for Donna High School, Donna North High School, three-D and D.A.P. content teachers in the areas of math, science, social studies, English language arts, and special education. And what you have here is that you've got three quotes in there. Lead Forward, thirty-two thousand. TCM, teacher-created materials, was not able to bid, although they did have all the information. That's what they submitted back. And then you have Action Potential Learning in the amount of thirty-four thousand-three-hundred-sixty-three and fifty cents. And at this time, Administration is recommending for Lead Forward to be the awarded vendor.
One question. How were the topic areas picked, chosen? Did you all work together to figure that out?
Yes, we made, our teachers got together, and they looked at areas of need, and based on the demographics that we have in the, you know, Lead Forward is very well-known in the state of Texas, serving over a thousand school districts. We were able to gather the high-frequency needs, teeth, that the students are performing low. So, the teachers were the ones that selected the areas that they needed more assistance with. And we had already submitted this proposal, but then we came across with the three quotes, and we couldn't get close. And so, we've been waiting and waiting, and so, we've had to push the staff development further and further along. And so, the three high schools worked together to try to get this particular company or company that could offer us this services. So, it was teacher-led.
That's awesome. Well, I just think that it was really great, the way that you all, it was clear to me that you focused in on particular areas and asked companies, these are the things we need help with, can you do this or not? And I saw some were like, we actually don't provide that. So, I just think it was awesome that you all did that. I move we approve.
Second.
It's a motion by Ms. Reyna, second by Ms. Abila. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, Trustees, moving on to Business and Finance. We have B.F. One, and this is the Public Hearing on Annual Financial Management Record 2017 Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, which the acronym you may hear as FIRST. To make that presentation will be Ms. Andy Martinez.
Good evening, Board of Presidents, may he settle us and board members, community members, and colleagues. TA has a requirement that we have to meet, and that's to review the first, the Financial Accountability Rating System with the public, and it's actually a public hearing. So, I'm going to get started on reviewing. I'm going to give you a little background. The background, we're going to read the Don ISD ratings, the rating history, Financial Accountability Rating System. Some more background, the indicators, summary of points, required disclosures, and then we'll have questions and comments. Okay, background. The first was adopted by the Legislature in nineteen ninety-nine, and it was actually implemented in two thousand and three. And these indicators are based on district staff, the student financial data for previous fiscal year, as reported through the state P.E.M. system. Financial Integrity System of Texas is the first, and its goal is to achieve quality performance in the management of school districts and financial resources. Every, by N.E.M., there's changes to, to the first. In August twenty fifteen, the Commissioners' Rule for School First were finalized. There were changes authorized by House Bill Five, Section forty-nine eighty-third Texas Legislature. House Bill Five amended Section thirty-nine point zero-eight-two of the T.E.C. to require the Commissioner of Education to include processes in the Financial Accountability Rating System for anticipating the future financial solvency of each school district. What it means is they added some solvency ratios, and they had a threshold that they felt districts should meet in order to be successful. Phase three of three was completed in twenty seventeen and includes fifteen indicators. The worksheets for twenty seventeen are actually a little bit more restrictive than the worksheets for twenty sixteen, which means that the, it's a little bit more challenging to receive a higher score. The way that it works is an A is for superior, and you have to earn between ninety and a hundred points. For a B, which is above standard, you have to meet a total of eighty to eighty-nine points. C, which meets standard, is sixty to seventy-nine points. And D, which is substandard, is less than sixty points. Okay, and twenty seventeen, Don ISD received a superior achievement rating, which is an A. This rating was based on the district's sound operations and compliance with financial reporting. And it's also based on twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen data. As I mentioned earlier, this is a year behind, and every time the first comes up, it's going to be the previous year's data. I did do a history, an annual history of the available points awarded and the awarded points for the district. For two thousand and eight, we scored a seventy-nine, and if you look at the points needed for superior achievement, they're seventy-five to eighty-five. So, in this year, we were, received a superior achievement. In two thousand and nine, I have a red circle, because we didn't meet the points needed for superior achievement, although we did get a passing rate. And that year, the score was seventy-two, seventy-two to eighty to receive superior achievement, and we scored a seventy-one. In twenty ten, twenty eleven, all the years going forward, we have managed to receive a superior achievement, which is an A for all those years. That's eight out of nine years. So, indicator one, there's, the first five indicators are pass or fail. If you fail one of the first five, then you fail the whole integrity system. So, the first question was, was a complete annual financial report and data submitted to the TA within thirty days of the November twenty-seven or January twenty-eight deadline, depending on the school district's fiscal year and date of June thirty or August thirty-first, respectively? For both fiscal years, another requirement of the first is to compare the two fiscal years, the previous and then the current. So, in fifteen sixteen and fourteen fifteen, the answer is yes. The district did meet that, and so, they got the total score for that. Indicator two-point A, was there an unmodified opinion in the annual financial report on the financial statements as a whole? And the answer for both years is yes. Indicator two-point B, did the external independent auditor report that the annual financial report was free of any instances of material weaknesses in internal controls or financial reporting compliance for local, state, or federal funds? And again, for fifteen sixteen and fourteen fifteen, the answer is yes. Indicator three, was the school district in compliance with the payment terms of all debt agreements at the end of the fiscal year? For both fiscal years, the answer is yes. Indicator four, did the school district make timely payments to teachers' retirement system, Texas Workforce Commission, Internal Revenue Service, and other governmental agencies? For both fiscal years, the answer is yes. Indicator five, was the total unrestricted net assets balance in the governmental activities column in the statement of net assets greater than zero? For both fiscal years, the answer is yes. Indicator six, was the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund for the school district sufficient to cover operating expenditures? The formula to calculate this ratio is cash and equivalents plus current investments divided by total expenditures minus facilities acquisition and construction times three-hundred-and-sixty-five days. For twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, the district had a hundred and ten-point-oh days available of cash, and it's very important, because your cash now is being looked at more closely than your fund balance. So, TA is, is monitoring our cash. So, we had a hundred and ten days of cash. For twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, we had a hundred and three days of cash available. So, Don ISD earned a score of ten for both fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. So, it was greater than the ninety days. Indicator seven, was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the school district sufficient to cover short-term debt? The formula for this ratio is current assets divided by current liabilities. So, for fifteen sixteen, it was three-point-six-nine, and for fourteen fifteen, it was two-point-seven-five-seven-three. So, in fourteen, in fifteen sixteen, we met, we got superior achievement, which was ten points. And in fourteen fifteen, we actually scored eight points, and we were deficient in getting the perfect score, because our, our ratio was two-point-seven-five-seven-three, which is a score of eight. Okay, indicator eight, was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency? So, for this ratio, the formula is long-term liabilities minus net pension liability divided by total assets. So, for fifteen sixteen, the answer, our ratio was point-one-eight-two-nine, which is greater than the sixty, and then for fourteen, which is less than the sixty. For fourteen fifteen, this answer was, or the ratio was three-point-one-five-seven, point-three-one-five-seven. So, for both years, the district received a score of ten. Indicator nine, did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures? Okay, the formula for this is total revenue divided by total expenditures minus facilities acquisition and construction minus one is greater than, or equal to, zero. For twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, our ratio was point-zero-four-eight-six or four-point-eight-six percent, which is greater than or equal to zero. For fourteen fifteen, the ratio was point-zero-five-nine-three or five-point-nine-three percent, which is greater than or equal to zero. So, for both years, the district scored a ten. Indicator ten, was a debt service coverage ratio sufficient to meet the required debt service? The formula for this is total revenues minus total expenditures plus debt service plus a fund code balance divided by the debt service. And it has, I listed the different functions that relate to these, these funds. So, for fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, the ratio was two-point-five-zero-two-six, which is greater than or equal to one-point-two. And for fourteen fifteen, the ratio was one-point-one-five-zero-eight, which also is greater than or equal to one-point-two. So, for those two years, the district scored a ten. Indicator eleven, was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio? For fifteen sixteen, our ratio was point-zero-nine-one-three, which was short of meeting the superior rating of ten. We received a score of eight, because it falls in between that range. For fourteen fifteen, the district did receive the ten points. Another note, side note on this, we have been working with Region One. We have a consultant who's helping us look at all the function codes and making sure that everything is coded properly in order to increase our administrative cost ratio. Indicator twelve, did the school district not have a fifteen percent decline in students-to-staff ratio over three years? So, in fifteen sixteen, we had a minus, well, minus point-zero-four-nine-seven decline, and in fourteen fifteen, we had a point-zero-eight-two-one negative decline. Those, both, those declines are less than the fifteen percent threshold, so Don ISD did receive a score of ten for both fifteen sixteen and fourteen fifteen. Indicator thirteen, did the comparison of public education information management system data to like information in the school district's annual financial report result in a total variance of less than three percent? This is asked in this, when we submitted the data for our annual financial report through P.E.M.s, were there any variances? So, for fifteen sixteen, there was a point-zero-zero-zero-four variance, and for fourteen fifteen, there was no variance. So, Don ISD scored a ten for both, both years. Indicator fourteen, did the external independent auditor report that the annual financial report was free of any instances of material non-compliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds? Don ISD met the standard in both fiscal year fifteen sixteen and fourteen fifteen. Indicator fifteen, did the school district not receive an adjusted repayment schedule for more than one fiscal year for an over-allocation of foundation school program funds as a result of a financial hardship? We did not receive any financial funds for hardship, so in fifteen sixteen and fourteen fifteen, Donna did meet a superior rating and got a score of ten. The results, so Donna Independent School District received a ninety-eight out of a hundred possible points, which is A for superior achievement for fiscal year twenty seventeen and fiscal year twenty sixteen. These ratings are based for fiscal year twenty seventeen on fifteen sixteen fiscal year data, and for fiscal year twenty sixteen, it was based on fourteen fifteen fiscal year data. So, for both years, we received a superior score. Okay, also, the first indicators, the determination of rating by applicable points is more restrictive, as I mentioned earlier. I kind of did a little summary of the twenty seventeen compared to twenty sixteen scores. So, in twenty seventeen, to score a superior rating, you have to receive a, or earn a score between ninety and a hundred points. In twenty sixteen, you could earn a score of seventy to one-hundred, and you'd still be a superior rating. For a score, for a B, above-standard rating for twenty seventeen, the, it's a range between of eighty to eighty-nine, and in twenty sixteen, the range was fifty to sixty-nine. So, as you can see, it's becoming a lot more. So as you can see, it's becoming a lot more challenging to get a superior rating on the first. And that's it for this part of the presentation. If anybody has any questions or comments?
Do you know how many school districts got superior?
Oh, in the Region One area, I think I can tell you there was probably about eight that didn't. Almost all school districts received superior.
Okay, I was just trying to get a sense for, like in the state of Texas, how hard is it to get a superior?
Yeah, in the whole state, I'm not really sure. But in, in the Region One area, there's just a handful that didn't meet superior rating.
And then in their required disclosures, under the reimbursements received by superintendent and board members for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, what is in the other category?
Other would be anything else you got reimbursed for that doesn't fit into the fuel or the meals or...
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm wondering what's in the other category. Because meals, lodging, transportation, is that like maybe registration fees?
Yeah, we included registration fees and we didn't...
In the other?
In the other, yeah, because it didn't, it didn't fall into the... Okay, so anyway, the required disclosures is a superintendent's employment contract, the reimbursements by the district, a summary of the schedule for the fiscal year, total expenditures paid and reimbursement received by the superintendent and each board member, including transactions resulting from use of school district credit cards to cover expenses incurred by the superintendent and each board member. The summary must separately report reimbursement for meals, lodging, transportation, motor fuel, and other items, outside compensation and fees to the superintendent, gifts from vendors, a summary schedule for the fiscal year of the total dollar amount of gifts of two hundred and fifty dollars or more received by the district's executive officers and each board member. The reporting requirements applies to only, only to gifts received by the executive officers and board members and their first-degree relatives from an outside entity that received payments from the district in the prior fiscal year and to gifts from competing vendors that were not awarded contracts in the prior fiscal year. There are exclusions for reimbursement for certain travel expenses for specified purposes. And number five is business transactions, a summary schedule for the fiscal year of the dollar amount received by a board member for the total amount of business transactions for the district. This disclosure is not to duplicate the disclosures regarding reimbursements. So we have the superintendent's term contract, and we have the required disclosures, the outside compensation and/or fees by the superintendent for professional consulting, gifts received by the executive officers and the board members in fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, and business transactions between school district and board members for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Also, there's a report that we prepared for the committee members to take home with them and just review. And if you have any questions, you can call me or Mr. Castillo. Thank you.
Mr. President, trustees, moving on to BF two. BF two is discussion and possible action to solicit request for quotes RFQ number one-one-zero-three-one-seven-dash-zero-four-two through National and State Purchasing Cooperative to replace Kaspersky antivirus and internet security software. And this one, I'd just like to have a little discussion briefly before we make a recommendation. As you recall, as, as part of the attachment here or supporting documents, you have a letter that came in from TA regarding the Kaspersky and how, from the federal point of view, it was, and the Department of Homeland Security was a directive to any and all federal entities that they need to refrain from the usage of Kaspersky. That same notation went down to all state entities in terms of education. In our case, it would be Texas Education Agency. And with us, it was, it was merely a recommendation. That we take this, that we're taking it lightly, no. That we just happen to be one of the entities or school districts that has Kaspersky, yes. And looking at what do we have right now, we have about a year and ten months remaining with Kaspersky. Brown's ISD is one of the school districts here in the valley that has that. From my understanding, Mr. Chavez made contact with them as well. They, they have opted to, to stay with Kaspersky and finish out what they currently have in terms of the contract. We currently have, as we mentioned, a year and ten months with that. But the other most important thing that I feel is, is very relevant here is this particular software is, is being used in all our stations for emails and for internet. When it comes to any and all data that refers to the student, on the teams, and also on the business aspect, that is protected through our ProLogic, and they have several waves of protection on that. In fact, they're totally separate and apart. But when it comes to the question, well, is our student data compromised? I mean, I don't want to sit here and tell you it's a hundred percent guaranteed, no. But we have plenty of walls for that, yes. Unlike the, the internet, just like our internet at home. So this is what we currently are using with Kaspersky. And the reason why we're going out, we, because we want to also be able to, to indicate and show some due diligence to TA in case they were asked, is what did y'all do about it? Because they're not given a directive. So basically, what we're asking you as trustees is to approve this so that we can go out and feel the market and find out what is out there that can be very comparable to, to what we are using. Now, some individuals say, well, why don't we have McAfee? Well, McAfee was a very, very expensive program for our district. And furthermore, we were having issues with that McAfee and our units. Kaspersky happened to be one, they just had a good relationship with our computers, for lack of better words. And unfortunately, it's the one that got, got picked in terms of, from federal government. So at this time, that's, I wanted to give you a little rationale behind that. We're still using it. We've certainly verified, like I mentioned with teams, on a true data for the student and the purchasing side and the business aspect. So unless there are any questions, administration recommends approval to go out and get these requests.
I do have some questions.
Are we going to be able to cancel that contract?
Well, that's, that's the thing. That's the reason why. We, we have vendor. That vendor was the first person that we, we had reached out to. Because remember that when we went out there, we actually felt the market for, for the software. And, and that one is with, I'm trying to think of the name of that vendor.
Microshare?
Say it again?
Microshare?
Microshare is the vendor. So Microshare came, and they're the ones that, that basically are the ones that we got the contract with for Kepersky. And, and making conversation with them or actually making contact with them, Mr. Chavez did, did visit with them and said they were willing to buy us out, but they were, they were going to do, give us a four-year contract with a different antivirus, which was known as Bit Defender. Bit Defender, and, and the expense again was going to be, I believe, at the seventy-nine, somewhere around there?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. But the dilemma there is that we were going to be locked in for four years. Well, we didn't want to go that far into the future. And, and so, yes, that was the response we had when it came to that with this particular vendor. And we wanted to reach out to them because obviously, it's, it's like I mentioned, I use the analogy of a hacienda Ford, you know, the, that's one Ford dealer. You got Bogus and you got, I don't know what else is out there. You just say, well, you need a different model. And they tried to do that, but we were not prepared to go out for a four-year with them.
This should be like a...
And, and honestly, I'm sorry, when we told them about what we have, they just kind of say, hey, that's not our deal because they have a lot of clients that are in the same predicament, except the federal government. They have, to them, it was a directive.
I just want to read this one sentence here for those, for folks that don't have this, haven't read this letter. So the risk cited by the Department of Homeland Security is twofold. That DHS is concerned with ties between Kaspersky lab officials and that of the Russian government, and that Russian law could allow Russian intelligence or government agencies to request or compel assistance from Kaspersky lab. These actions could result in the interception of U.S. communications, transiting Russian networks and/or capitalizing on the access provided to U.S. federal government networks through Kaspersky products. I know everybody doesn't have, hasn't read this or have this in their, so I just want to make sure everybody knows.
Mr. President, you had the question?
Yeah, the, the question was, how much do we owe on this contract yet?
Mr. Chavez, I believe we were going on a...
How much are we on the hook for? If we say tomorrow, we're gone or whatever?
The thing is, good evening, board member, Mr. Castillo. The thing is that we went for a three-year contract. So we already paid it upfront because it was more cost-effective to go for the three years so we could be saving some, the district some money. So sixty-nine, we'll be, we'll be losing about fifty thousand.
So based on the, on the, this looks like negligence on their part. Wouldn't they reimburse us that money?
They won't do that, no, it's already, hmm. Like we get with legal, you know.
Legals, we've been sharing with them. And again, we just need to look at this because, like I mentioned earlier, there's no such thing as guarantee when it comes to hacking nowadays. You know, you get the people that are, the brights can go to the other side of the fence, and they're the ones that will go into and hack it.
The way I understand it, I mean, this was something that was built in by Kaspersky. What are the guys called, the design, uh...
added program?
The malware and the viruses.
Design writers.
The scripting scripts, yeah.
I mean, I mean, that's an internal problem. I mean, you would think that Kaspersky should man up and say, you know, well, you know, we're going to be able to... This is, this is a follow-up, a liability, right, under, sure, yeah?
We were here, we, we reviewed the, the letter. We actually did a search throughout the state as to what other districts made changes from, from this program. We haven't found much traction on it. The only, the biggest issue we were concerned with was the FERPA concerns on two points because the recommendation came from the federal government, and FERPA is a federal law. But also, FERPA involves our students' private information. But there's nothing that says the district has to do it. It's more, it's really a discretionary issue for you guys to deal with. The bigger issue is, how can we get out of the contract? I haven't looked at, I haven't looked at the issue from that perspective yet. So if you want us to look at it from that perspective, I definitely can, but...
I think, I think based on the, on the recommendation that you have here is, is just to go out for the quotes.
Correct.
And that, that gets the ball rolling.
Kind of have a backup plan just in case.
And we already have that in place instead of waiting around another thirty days.
That's correct.
If they make it mandatory, then we have to pull out.
Yeah.
I just want to reiterate one more time, trustees, that the actual student data and the actual business data is being protected by several walls when it comes to...
That's what they tell us.
Well, they, they use a different operating system, Linux, which is totally different language.
So again, administration recommends approval.
Second.
Is a motion by Mr. Avila, second by Ms. Green, all in favor?
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
BF three, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action to award request for quotes RFQ number zero-nine-seven-one-seven-zero-four-one to purchase two seventy-seven passenger buses with or without seat belts and two fifty-four fifty-four, I'm sorry, fifty-four passenger special needs buses with seat belts for the Transportation Department for the school year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. In your, in your packet, you do have this information. What, what we've got here is that administration is recommending the two seventy-seven passenger buses being from the vendor Rush Bus Centers. The make model would be Bluebird, and it would be with seat belts, with seat belts. And the other two would come from vendor Longhorn Bus Sales. They would be the fifty-four passenger special need buses. The make model would be International. And of course, in, in their case, it's with seat belts. And, and that is what the recommendation is being done in the committee. You had Mr. Solis, Director of Transportation, Mr. Renaldo Perez, the Head Mechanic Transportation Department, and Mr. Gus Flores, Assistant Purchasing Agent, that sat in. And Mr. Solis is present, because anybody has any questions. But that is the recommendation that we have.
Those Bluebird buses, are those the, the ones that are like the ones that... The ones that are traveling buses?
No, those are activity buses. Now, Bluebird, they have, these are your big yellow, yellow buses that are high, high in stature. The activity buses are your, that's usually a big, big setback when it comes to activity. They're so low, and we heard about all that other dilemma. So, no, these are the big yellow buses.
And which part of the budget is this coming out of?
This is coming from transportation, well, actually, no.
The fund balance.
This is, this is that designated fund that was approved for...
Okay, that's what I was checking, okay.
So this is going into already...
What's the cost of one bus?
In this case, let me see. Ninety-six thousand seventy-seven for the seventy-seven with seat belts. And then you have for the, 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 our fifty-four passenger. That is, equates to ninety-seven, ninety-six and sixty-one, ninety-six thousand sixty-one.
Have you all thought about refurbishing some of these buses, Mr. Solis?
Thought about it, but we can look at it. As long as it comes back, it's going, you want it refurbished or you want it...
Good morning, Mr. Board President. I'm sorry. Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent. Refurbishing which buses, sir?
Well, the thing is, when I was in that, one of the conferences in Dallas, there's a, there's a, there's a program from the, from the state prison system that they're doing. And they drop the engines and transmissions, tires, repaint the whole thing for about fifty-four thousand. And it comes back brand new. I saw the buses that they had there. It's something to look into. You know, that's what I was asking, those prices.
I agree with that.
It's brand-new engines, brand-new transmissions, brand-new tires, everything, train, trains, everything. And then they paint the whole thing. They put decals, if you want decals. I mean, the whole thing just comes out.
Prisoners?
Yeah. Yeah, the prison system, yeah. They're, they're working, that's what they're doing for a lot of these schools up north.
Yes, sir.
You know, and it's just same buses that we have, the ones that are out there. Just send those out there, and you can probably get four or five for the price of one probably, I don't know.
What's the name of that?
I got it in my, my box.
Okay, but that, that can just be a topic right now. We really need to stick to the agenda and respect.
It'll be something to look at.
Definitely.
Okay, the, the recommendation?
Administration recommends approval as noted on those two separate vendors and two separate make models.
So we get six, total of six?
Four, no, no, four, two and two.
Okay. And these are to replace or add to?
Add, add, we're adding to the fleet.
With seat belts, correct?
Right, we see, that's correct. No, we're going with, that's why I made the, the verbal recommendation. Hey, let me run it one more time. The vendor Rush Bus Centers, the two seventy-seven passengers with Bluebird being the, the make, with seat belts. And the two fifty-four passenger special need buses will be from Longhorn Bus Sales as a vendor. And the make model will be International. Administration recommends approval.
Your recommendation is to approve?
I move.
The motion by Dr. Mary, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries? BF four?
BF four, Mr. President, trustees, we've got discussion and possible action on approval of the McKinney Vento slash Texas, Texas Support for Homeland Education Program in form of NOGA number one-eight-dash-zero-three-three, Fund Two-O-Six, in the amount of eighty-four thousand and seventy-five dollars. This is something that we get on a duty basis. Usually, it's about eighty-five thousand, so you see that amount here. And, and again, this is a, a notice of grant, and administration recommends approval.
So move.
The motion by Mr. Avila?
Second.
Second by Mr. Guerrero, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Motion carries?
Moving on to Human Resources, Mr. President, trustees, we have HR one, discussion and possible action to approve submission of a maximum class size exception waiver to the Texas Education Agency for Don ISD. As, as noted, during a board review, this is something that we rationalize on this. And at the end of the day, we feel comfortable in bringing this forward to you because the elementaries are pretty mobile. And sometimes they'll go up, sometimes they'll go down. But at this point in time, we do have those schools that are in your packet. Guzman has one, Lenore has one, Price has one second, one third. Garza has one fourth, Wachoa has one kinder. Muñoz has two, kinder, one third. Run has one first. And again, as noted, this particular requirement is from TA because of the twenty-two to one ratio, and that's specifically for kinder through fourth grade. When it comes to fifth grade, there's no, there's no number on that. Obviously, we still like to monitor that as well as the pre-k. So this is specifically for the kinder through fourth. And this needs, requires board approval. It also, at the campus level, there are... It also, at the campus level, their COP, Campus Planning Advisory Committee has to approve this. It is auto-processed, and then we have to go onsite and, online, I'm sorry, and submit that to the commissioner. And then, of course, it's contingent on the commissioner approval after all of these other approvals take place. So at this time, if there's any questions, administration recommends approval.
Well, we've already exhausted every other avenue for shifting people around and stuff.
Yes, sir, in fact, you know, like I mentioned, we're doing pretty good. Some of them that were on this list a week ago are no longer there because the number went down. And some that we're not on that we have to add.
Is there a recommendation to approve the waiver?
I just remember we were, we were literally at the same point, this point last year. I'm just thinking about how in years to come, like, are we, are we working towards actually not having to do this at all? And that's just what I'm thinking of, is that, you know, are we expecting that, like, we're gonna kind of always be working with this twenty-three, twenty-four, so we have to do a waiver every year? Or are we gonna set something up so maybe we have a whole year where we're not bringing the waiver back on to the table?
That's a very good question, Mr. President, and obviously, it's one that we, we really can't predict because it has to do with the growth. And I can tell you right now that the rezoning we did last year from the north to the south, those campuses, had we not done that rezoning, we would have already been having to replace or to add several teachers there. And so, the mobility is something that really is unpredictable when it comes to this. Again, I don't want to revisit that again, but I want to make a little reminder. The entire state of Texas has what is known as District of Innovation. And as you all know, ours didn't go through last year. That is one of the tools that's being allowed for districts to utilize because it is an ongoing, every single district has, has something that they look at because of their growth. Now, Mr. Guerrero mentioned, okay, other options. Sure, we can have other options in the event that we have campuses that continue to grow. And we're gonna be looking at possibly busing those kids. Because once we bring in a teacher, we're not gonna bring a teacher until we know that the number is already gonna be way up there at at least twelve or more to bring that teacher. So in terms of trying to accommodate a student that comes in, and that particular campus where he or she is zoned is already at its max, but then the neighboring school, elementary, has a room, and it's close by, we're going to be busing him or her to that.
So the parent drops the kid off, the campus says...
When we reassign, when we have to rezone due to the capacity being full, then, that's just what I'm saying, that the district takes, puts the bill on the transportation. If a parent on his or her own says, I want to transfer my child from school A to school B, now that's a savings that we have because the parent is responsible for transportation to and from the school.
If we don't pass this waiver, how does that put your hands?
Well, we have, we have thirty days, Mr. Billman, from the time, because this is all, has to go with the process. And, you know, the other thing would be, okay, we don't pass this, then we're gonna have to come in and ask for an additional teacher. There's already a couple that we have to bring in because of enrollment. Those, this waiver would not help us when it comes to the enrollment being higher on a particular class. And so this is what we've got.
And it seems that it's the same campuses, is it not?
No.
None, 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 none.
I think that street was definitely got us a singletary.
What really happens, Mr. Castillo, after the thirty days? What will really happen?
We're gonna, if this doesn't happen, then we're gonna start busing students. I mean, we have to do what we have to do, so then, then calls will be coming in and say, well, wait a minute, you know, why does my son or daughter have to go to this school over here when they should be here? And are we gonna say, this campus B, campus C has room, so we're gonna bus you over there?
And there's no other shuffling around of teachers to...
No, because you kind of have to, like, add teachers.
Right, to do that. Now, I know that it becomes pretty intense in terms of the details when you talk about demographics because one thing for sure is that any new hires we're bringing into elementaries, up until about a week before school started, we were not bringing any elementary teacher on board unless he or she was bilingually certified. Bilingual certified. When we got to that point of a week before school started, we literally had to say, okay, we're gonna put you on a one-year permit, and at the end of the year, you need to understand that you may not be coming back unless you make the attempts to pass the test. And once we have a hundred percent bilingual, then it's gonna help us tremendously. But that's another tie that we have to also adhere to with the requirement that a non-bilingual teacher cannot teach a bilingual class. But that would be the extreme, Mr. Billman, you know, the busing of the students.
Yeah, I mean, I understand this year, I just hope that, like, what I think we should do next year is just anticipate in some of the places, look at trends over the years and where we've been, class size, and start with a class that is much smaller, so that it adds, 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 but never gets past the twenty-two. We just have to plan for that, you know what I mean? So you start your year with two tw- like, classes of thirteen, and then you add, add, and you never get to the twenty, whatever. Because right now, you start at twenty, and then you add four, and then you're already over.
Our magical number, if you recall, we were talking eighteen, and we maintained, hold the water, as they say in football, hold the water for eighteen, and that didn't last long. But we tried to even out as much as we could at the eighteen.
So it seems like we have to go even lower than eighteen in some campuses, if that's what you're saying, eighteen wasn't, went over, so. All right, well, I move, we approve.
I second that.
Submotion by Ms. Raina to approve, second by Mr. Robina, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, trustees, HR2, discussion and possible action to amend policy CPC local as presented. This is very simple, just we need to be certain that it was done, because only trustees, you approve policy. And if you note that policy CPC local is with the Office Management Records Department, and that is the one that's over on the Todd Campus building, that's district-wide. The dilemma here is if you look at the, at your packet there, it says the superintendent shall oversee the performance of records. Okay, and basically, it's accurate, but in any and all entities, you will always have the superintendent or designate. Because obviously, I'm not there on a day-to-day basis. So what you have there, that was just an oversight when they did the changing of the, of the ties, if you will, from the previous managed record. So you see the back, it says now, or designate, or designate, and that's the only change that we're recommending. Because Miss Pat Lamitas is the person on record with TA as the management record.
This is one of those items on that.
Right, this is one of those things we looked at, and so we've studied that and said, yeah, that's missing there. Administration recommends approval.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Robina to approve, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, I meant to vote in favor, sorry.
And HR3, discussion and possible action to approve trustee secretary and superintendent authorization to reach, research best practices to improve utilization of the Lighthouse Anonymous Program for Dona ISD. In essence, this is something that Mrs. Raina and I have visited a little bit on. She just wanted to go on record that US trustees were aware of what Mrs. Raina's intent is, and so I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, so y'all remember, came out in the forensic audit, the Lighthouse, we have this system. It's really not being utilized to the way it needs to be, or could be. It could be a tremendously valuable tool for us to better support folks across the district, parents, students. So what I'm asking for you all to do is to approve that myself, the superintendent, Chief Walden, and also our legal counsel essentially just put together a proposal to bring back to you all on how to go about really helping this tool, help us move this district forward so that things become more transparent, more information is flowing, the right kind of information, and that there's, you know, accountability. So that's what it is, just so that we can work together to propose something, bring it back to you all to review and look at, and take some steps to move forward.
No questions, administration recommends approval.
So move.
There's a motion by Mr. Robina, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? You go, girl. Motion carries. Okay, it is eight forty-three, we're gonna be heading into executive session as authorized by Texas Government Code Section five-five dot zero-seven-one, dot zero-seventy-two, dot zero-seven-three, dot zero-seven-four, dot zero-seven-five, dot zero-seven-six, dot oh-eight-two, dot oh-eight-three, and dot oh-eight-four. Okay, the time is ten fifty-five, and we are back from executive session.
Mr. President, trustees, with regard to open session, we've got Letter A, discussion and possible action to approve superintendent's recommendation of personnel. At this time, administration is recommending approval of the Paris noted in executive, as well as the termination of named employees. Administration recommends approval.
I move, we approve.
Second that.
Submotion by Ms. Raina, second by Mr. Robina, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed?
Letter B, discussion and possible action to approve district personnel. No action on that.
No action?
No action?
No action on that one. Letter C, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action regarding proposed settlement agreement of civil action number seven, colon sixteen, dash, CV, dash, zero-zero-six-six-six. John Doe individually and a next friend of Sarah Doe, a minor v Donna Independent School District. And at this time, the recommendation?
I move.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Watts to approve the proposed settlement?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robina, all in favor?
Favor, in favor.
Favor.
I'll be opposed.
Letter D, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action regarding resolution of the earlier proposed termination hearing. And once again, in this one, administration is recommending to approve, as discussed in executive session, regarding the settlement.
I move, we approve.
Second.
Submotion to approve by Ms. Raina, second by Dr. Mary, all in favor?
In favor.
Motion carries.
Letter E, discussion and possible action regarding designation of lead counsel in TA docket number zero-zero-five hyphen LH hyphen zero-nine hyphen two zero-one-seven. No action on this, Mr. President. Letter F, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action regarding the recommendation to propose the termination of the term contract of Marisela Valdez for Good Cause.
I so move.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Billman to terminate the contract of Marisela Valdez. Second by Mr. Guerrero, all in favor? All opposed?
I oppose.
Favor.
And I'm gonna go ahead and go in favor as well. So, motion carries.
Letter G, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action to approve pending or contemplated litigation, settlement matters and/or matters where the professional duty under the State Board requires private consultation with school attorney.
No action?
No action.
In motion to adjourn?
So move.
Meeting adjourned.